Good afternoon, this is Todd Ferrante, Board President. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting to order. I would like to ask our board members to identify themselves for the record. Todd Ferrante is President, William Buchanan.
President.
Katie Addis.
Present.
John Andes.
Present.
William Gordy.
Present.
Elena McComas.
Present.
And Donald Smack.
Present.
We do have a quorum. And now I need a motion to approve today's board meeting agenda and a second.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. McComas, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Buchanan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now I need a motion to enter into closed session under general provisions of Article 3-305 of the Annotated Code of Maryland for the following reasons. To approve closed session minutes from the previous month. Section 305b 1 to discuss appointment, employment and assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials over whom it has jurisdiction or any other personnel that affects one or more specific individuals. Section 305b 7 to consult with counsel. And section 305b 10 to discuss school safety. Can I have a motion and a second to enter into closed session?
Opposed.
Motion by Mr. Smack.
Second by Bill Gordy.
Second by Mr. Gordy, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now in closed session.
Make sure I'm on. Good evening, everyone. As we reconvene this Board of Education meeting, I want everyone to know that we still have a quorum. A closed session meeting was held today pursuant to Articles 3-305B of the Annotated Code of Maryland to approve previous closed session minutes to discuss personnel matters, to consult with legal counsel, and to discuss school safety. Today Pastor Peggy Briggs is with us from St. Paul's United Methodist Church in Berlin, and she will lead us in the invocation. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Briggs, thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, good evening. Let us pray. Gracious God, Creator everlasting, we thank you, God, for this day. We thank you, God, that you have allowed us to assemble here today as the Board of Education. We thank you as the community, Lord. Now, we ask, as we come to discuss delicate issues about our educational system, we ask, God, that you will grant each and every one that speaks wisdom and insight, God, and we ask that every-
Okay, now we're resuming the Board of Education meeting. I do want to let people that are on livestream know that we had a medical emergency in the building. Everyone is okay. There was no business conducted while we were offline, okay? And now I'll turn it back over to Pastor Peggy Briggs for the invocation. Pastor Briggs, thank you for being here from St. Paul United Methodist Church.
Yes. Gracious God, we come before you once again, God, to say thank you. Lord, we thank you for letting us know that you are everywhere, for you were truly here with us this evening, Lord God, and we ask that your Holy Spirit would touch Catalina, and we ask, God, for all who will provide care for her, that you will give them wisdom and insight on how to care for your child, be with her mother, all of her family. And Lord, now we ask that your Holy Spirit would come in and minister to our hearts and our minds as we're gathered here today for a Board of Education meeting. We thank you, Lord God, for everyone that is on the board. We thank you for everyone that is here representing the community, and we ask now that you would grant each and every one who speaks tonight, give them wisdom and insight. And Lord God, we ask that what we say and do will be pleasing unto you. And God, we ask that you remind all of us, God, that we are our brother's keeper, and we thank you for this and all other things. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Briggs, thank you for being here, and thank you for that invocation. We deeply appreciate it. Okay, now I'd like to welcome our student representatives who are joining us to provide their monthly updates from our high schools, and I believe this month we will be starting with Tristen from Pokemoke City. Thank you, high school.
Thank you. In place of Catalina Luzater, I will be reading Snow Hill's school report. As winter comes to an end and spring approaches, Snow Hill High School has had some exciting developments. The Mu Alpha Theta Math Honor Society welcomed fourteen new students, and Ro Kappa, the Social Studies National Honor Society, welcomed nine new students. The counseling department has finished advising students in grades nine through eleven on their course selection for the upcoming 2024 to 2025 school year. On March eighteenth, Mrs. Johnson, the school counselor, attended the Maryland School Counseling Association Conference in Cambridge, Maryland, along with other counselors from other schools in the district. They had the opportunity to network, receive professional development, and stay informed about the latest trends and practices in school counseling. SAT Boot Camp was a huge success with over seventeen juniors attending each Saturday from nine to twelve. The format of the SAT has changed from pencil and paper to digital this year, so these students will be well-prepared to succeed. Snow Hill High School would like to extend a big thank you to the community partners who donated breakfast for each day, including Patty Jean's Boutique, Ocean City, Mr. Lee Taylor, and Snow Hill McDonald's. And now I will be reading Pokemoke High School's school report. The Pokemoke High School community enjoyed several student and community celebrations and events in the last month. Our winter sports came to an end with state contenders in swimming and indoor track. With the help of our excellent coaching staff, all teams represented well in both athletics and character. Excellent sportsmanship was displayed by students and family, and we thank the Pokemoke community for their partnership in this. We are looking forward to the spring season as almost half of our student population are involved in athletics. Additional accolades include Future Educators and our Race to Teach program, securing a first-place win at the state level, and will be competing nationally in Orlando this summer. Several students who are part of Future Educators of America will also represent PHS nationally in Orlando after placing in the state FBLA competition. Band students excelled in District Festival, and our legal intern secured a win against Gunston School before wrapping up their season. Recently, we had several students win gold, silver, and bronze awards at the Worcester County Media Expo. We want to thank our wonderful school librarians for their hard work and diligence in celebrating the accomplishments of our students. Our Community Tribe Time and Rising Warriors Night had a great turnout last week with families of students in grades eight through twelve in attendance. It was a great time to listen to Expectations, tour our school, and meet teachers and community partners. This past Saturday, our MC JROTC successfully hosted our school systems Military Ball. We are thankful for the hard work and leadership exhibited by our instructors and cadets. And finally, we are excited to have recently welcomed twenty-five new inductees into our Mu Alpha Theta Mathematics Honor Society. Our students continue to demonstrate kindness, acceptance, and compassion by organizing an Exceptional Ability Spirit Week for Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. This is organized by LEED, one of our amazing student leadership teams. And finally, Pokemoke area schools are grateful to our Board of Education for their support of our school communities and dedication to our amazing school system. And now on to Delia Holland with Stephen Nikater's report and the Worcester Technical High School report.
Thank you, Tristen. March has brought more than daffodils for a busy Stephen Nikater High School as instruction, sports, and extracurricular activities are coming full speed. Looking back on the past month, SEHS had a lot going on and a lot to celebrate. To celebrate African-American History Month, our Ro Kappa Honor Society members partnered with elementary schools where they led fun activities and read the story of Ruby Bridges to our younger friends. Our National English Honor Society held a special panel event where we welcomed students, teachers, and community members to share experiences regarding Black representation in education. And on Leap Day, members of our Surf Rider Club participated in the Eighth Annual Hill Day where members discussed environmental legislation with various lawmakers. We had twenty-three Media Expo winners, including the Media Specialist Award for the county, seven Young Authors Contest finalists, a Carson-recognized scholar, and Optimist Art and Essay Contest winners. Senior Abigail Vdella represented us well during the Maryland General Assembly as the Worcester County Page, and our NJROTC team earned top awards in push-ups at the Seaford High School Drill Meet. Meanwhile, during the month of March, our academic team rocked the regional competition at Warwick Community College last Friday, placing first in the ten-team tournament. Our key club hosted a very successful blood drive, and our theater program presented the Cantorville Ghosts last weekend. We also had two students conduct a presentation at the Secondary Schools Writing Centers Association National Conference at the University of Boston. We brought an enthusiastic group of future Maryland educators to the Teach Maryland Conference, and we brought a group of aspiring journalists to the Columbia Scholastic Press Association Conference in New York City. Currently, our school is sponsoring a beach toy drive for Believe in Tomorrow. Our after-school academy is about to be off and running for the spring session, and the National Honor Society is preparing for its annual induction ceremony on April fourth. In sports, our men's basketball team earned a regional title. Our Unified Strength and Conditioning Team earned a first-ever state title, and our wrestling team earned a fifth state championship, along with Elijah Colick, Gavin Salito, and female A.J. Johnson earning individual state titles. Today, we administered the SAT to nearly four hundred members of our junior class. In April, we have prom, our annual job fair, and We Excel ceremony, as well as additional Honor Society induction ceremonies, concerts, contests, and other events on deck. Finally, our spring sports have started off well, and we are excited to see what our two-hundred-and-fifty-plus athletes will be able to accomplish this season. As always, we'd like to thank our central office leaders and our Board of Education members for your continued support, and we wish everyone warm spirits as warmer days are ahead. Thank you. Now I will be reading the March Board Notes for Worcester Technical High School. Both our Skills USA and our FFA teams are in the midst of many practices to prepare for the state competitions. Both groups will be traveling to Westminster, Maryland to compete with teams from around the state on the weekend of April twelfth. First-place finishers in each category will go to the national competitions. Skills Nationals will take place in Atlanta, Georgia, and FFA will take place in Indianapolis, Indiana. Our biomedical students have an amazing trip planned in early May to go to a hospital outside of Washington, DC to observe an open-heart surgery. Our students are lucky to be afforded this opportunity. Teacher Mr. Severn has worked extremely hard to get all the logistics ironed out. Our next parent conference night is scheduled for April eleventh. Mr. Zimmer has been so pleased with the attendance and the number of parent contacts that have been made since we gave parents the choice of in-person or Zoom conferences. Our National Technical Honor Society induction will take place on April eighteenth. Students have filled out the applications, and the guidance department is currently determining which students meet the eligibility requirements. We'd like to wish our Teacher of the Year candidate, Mrs. Kaitlin Evans, best of luck in the upcoming Worcester competition. She is an outstanding representative of all the teachers from Worcester Tech. Lastly, we hope all students and staff have an enjoyable spring break. Back to you, Mr. Ferrante.
Delia and Tristen, thank you for those reports, and thank you for filling in. We do appreciate it. Fortunately, I skipped ahead, and I forgot to ask my board if you guys would give me a motion to approve the board minutes from February twentieth and February twenty-eighth. So I apologize for that. If I could have a motion and a second for that, appreciate it. Motion by Mr. Smack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Buchanan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And now I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. I know I try each month to keep my remarks focused on the positive things going on in our school system. Well, there has been no shortage of good news since last month. For instance, one of our teachers was featured on Good Morning America. Shaw students published a book with surfing legend Kelly Slater, and one of our libraries received a $10,000 grant. I could go on and on, but today I'd like to address our families with what I believe to be the most important communication I have ever given. I'd like to talk tonight about what we do to keep our kids and staff safe in our outstanding schools here in Worcester County. First, Dr. Wallace serves as the chief academic and safety officer of our school system. Dr. Wallace brings a wealth of experience to the table a document that not only details disciplinary strategy, but strives to address the whole child and brings an equity lens to student discipline. When shared, these guidelines were held up by the Maryland Center for School Safety as a model for other school systems in the state of Maryland. I mentioned restorative environments. We are a school system that uses restorative practices. This means that we focus on fostering a sense of community within our classrooms to prevent conflict and on reacting to any misconduct by encouraging students to accept responsibility for their actions and rebuild relationships. And I'm here to tell you that it truly works. Just last year, research from the University of Chicago found that schools using restorative practices saw a staggering 35% reduction in student arrests in schools and a 15% reduction in out-of-school student arrest. The researchers also saw declines in arrests for both violent and nonviolent offenses. Here in Worcester, utilizing restorative practices with fidelity, the same trends are holding true. This year, our discipline referrals are trending to be much lower than in previous years. Excuse me. Now, that's not easy to say that instances don't occur. I think we all recognize that our schools are a microcosm of our world. Fights do happen, harmful words are said, and certainly mistakes are made. We don't dispute that. We never have disputed that. And we have response protocols in place to address each of them. Following training last summer and into the start of the school year, our administrators, teachers, and staff have been trained in the I Love You Guys standard response and reunification protocols. These protocols provide common language and accompanying actions should a school's safety status ever change. Parents and families also receive this information about what they should expect to occur during these different statuses, as well as what they should do to help their children feel safe. All of the information on these protocols is available to all of you right on our website. Lastly, through our Dynamic Impact Partnership with JHU, John Hopkins University, every school has dedicated a school improvement team to work on the improvement of school safety practices, one of their primary focus areas for this year as well. Through this process, schools are continually reviewing their practices, which includes traditional emergency plans to refine and make adjustments to their safety practices that make most sense for their particular school. As you know, our schools are not a one-size-fits-all. What works at Pokemoke Elementary School may not work at Stephen Decatur High School, and so on. This work is continuous and ongoing. I hope this information is reassuring to our families that our board, this board, and our school and school system leaders always have the safety of our students, and I say "our" students because they belong to all of us, and staff at the front of our minds each and every day. And through the work of our School Safety Committee, we hope to continue to explore and to identify ways we all can improve. Also, before I close, I want to encourage our families to reach out to us if they have any questions. And should you know of a concern or problem, please, please be sure to report it. You can do it by anonymously using the Safe Schools Maryland tip line, which directly routes to both law enforcement and to our school system staff. The tip line number is 833-MDB-SAFE. I'll repeat that. 833-MDB, as in boy, SAFE. And you can do it online by clicking on the icon at the bottom of our website and any of our school websites. I hope tonight reassures our families that we are doing everything we can every single day to make sure that our kids return home to their families and are safe, as well as the outstanding staff that provides the educational information to our kids each and every day. Thank you, Mr. Ferrante.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. It's now time to recognize any audience members joining us from the following organizations. Do we have anybody in here from the WCTA? Thank you, Mimi. Appreciate it. WCESPA? Worcester County Retired School Personnel. Thank you, Gwen. And representatives from various schools, PSYX, PTAs, anyone here from there? Okay, thank all of you for being with us today. Now, we have a recognition today. It is School Social Work Month, and I'm going to ask Mr. Buchanan to read the proclamation. Mr. Buchanan?
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. Whereas school social workers serve as vital members of the educational team, playing an important role in creating a positive environment at schools, and whereas school social workers are especially skilled in identifying and providing services to students who face serious challenges to school success, including poverty, disability, discrimination, abuse, substance abuse, mental health, trauma, bullying, loss of a loved one, and other barriers to learning, and whereas school districts and local educational agencies should continue to work with school social workers to address students' social, emotional, physical, mental health, and environmental needs so that students may achieve academic success. And whereas social workers are one of the largest groups of mental health care providers in the United States and work daily to help people overcome mental health challenges such as depression and anxiety and substance use disorders, whereas the social work profession of decades has been dedicated to improving human well-being and enhancing the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable among us. Now, therefore, in recognition of the numerous contributions made by social workers, the Worcester County Board of Education extends greetings and best wishes to all observing March 2024 as School Social Work Month. And this proclamation is signed by Todd A. Ferrante, President, Worcester County Board of Education, and Louis H. Taylor, Superintendent of Schools.
Come on up. I'm going to ask Lauren Williams to come up. Lauren?
Okay, moving forward, all individuals who have signed up to address the Worcester County Board of Education may do so for one or two minutes regarding information, commendations, or concerns, which may need future board attention. Concerns that are specific to an individual will not be discussed and should be directed to appropriate district personnel for investigation. When you are called to address the board, please state your name and address for the record. And I also want to make sure that all of our speakers know we have quite a few speakers tonight, so please keep your comments and try to wrap it up in two minutes. And I'll ask the audience to be respectful of all speakers when they're speaking. All right? Our first speaker today is Kathy Cader.
Kathy Cader?
Kathy, turn that mic on.
Oh. Now I'm part of my two minutes, right? Okay. I'm Kathy Cader of Bishopville, retired VP for Decatur and former VP in Wycomico County. I'd like to speak on the issue of safety. The board is to be commended for taking the high road and choosing not to engage in any more back-and-forth in the media. There is no response that would satisfy those others anyway. They are looking for a platform on which to run for political position. When a political group is in search of a platform on which to run, and there is no "there there", they will create it, as we have seen through erroneous manipulation of discipline data and inappropriate display of videos on TV and just the general criminalization of our kids in our community. It's no coincidence that Christopher Lee looks like he's trying to imitate Sheriff Lewis of Wycomico County. Hint: We are not Wycomico County. Or that Heiser has inserted herself in the process, and don't even get me started on the commissioners. I know from personal experience the link the board goes to to ensure their staff is properly trained, supported, and that student population is kept safe. From annual A&amp;S safety conferences to monthly A&amp;S meetings to update and improve safety measures. There is the superintendent's quickness in calling all his administrative teams and outside support personnel together to address critical issues facing us. Not to mention how closely the school administration works with the SROs in their building when dealing with disciplinary issues. In instances of public safety, the community has always been notified and kept up to date. I say maintain your focus on educational needs, teacher salaries, and the fight for the budget that support that. Our county is rated third in the state. Our state is sixth-best in the nation. That should tell you something. Keep blocking out the destructive forces trying to instill fear tactics to control a political narrative, a narrative that seeks to destroy what's taken decades to establish and has drawn great families to our community. There are more people in the community than you think that are with you. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Next speaker is Pat Barbley.
Good evening, Board. Pat Barbley, Newark, Maryland. In preparing to make a statement to you, Worcester County Board of Education, tonight, after revealing many of the statements that I have made at past board meetings, it dawned on me, nothing has changed. I am still reminding you that the Worcester County Commissioners have always generously funded the Board of Education, and the blueprint for Maryland schools representatives who made a presentation to us recently seem to concur. Also, that the board determines how the lump sum of $130 million is spent, not the county commissioners. Thus, it is the board that has chosen not to prioritize teachers, students, and staff. And regardless of whether it is termed as an assault or referral, excuse me, school violence is increasing. The only thing decreasing is transparency. Transparency about the budget, transparency about the school violence. In one week's time, I was told of an incident where an 11-year-old was given an in-school survey, causing this child to research sexual terms the student was not familiar with, terms this child would not have been exposed to except for this in-school survey. Also, a grandparent told me of his granddaughter does not use the restroom. She holds it all day because a boy had walked in on her. A grandmother stated they see the videos of violence every day when the children come home from school and show them what they have filmed. This past week, I heard from the state's attorney's press conference that elementary school children are exposed to sexual activity on the school bus. We learned this week that one student, excuse me, attempted to strangle another in the cafeteria. Why are we keeping this information from parents and law enforcement and the public? Is our reputation more important than our teachers, staff, and students' safety? I am before you again asking you to talk about this with us and address this problem that involves our community before something tragic happens.
Next speaker is Melissa Reed.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Melissa Reed. I live in Berlin, Maryland. And for the last 26 years, I have been privileged enough to be the art teacher at Buckingham Elementary School. I'm here tonight, first of all, to say thank you. The Board of Education, the majority of the Board of Education, has really been on the front lines for a while, and I feel like by yourselves, and now we're a little late to the party, but we're here because our public schools are the backbone of the community of Worcester County. I was born and raised here. My father was born and raised here, my grandparents, great-great-grandparents, going back several generations. Like I said, I've been a teacher here for 26 years. Both my children are graduates of Worcester County Public Schools, and my husband is also an educator in Worcester County Public Schools. And when I hear words like corrupt and wicked and evil being used to describe the Worcester County teachers, educators, the staff, I remind the people in this room and people listening outside this room that you're attacking your own community. That one of the things that makes Worcester County such a wonderful and special place is the sense of community that we have. You know your neighbors. You look out for your neighbors. Your neighbors look out for you. You see people you know in the grocery store and your house of worship that you may go to on Saturdays or Sundays. We need each other in this community, and we need a strong public school system that is an economic backbone of this county. And as I have said, in the 26 years that I have been involved in Worcester County Public Schools, absolutely, as Mr. Taylor alluded to, of course there are problems and issues. Absolutely. Of course mistakes happen. Absolutely. But I have only seen amazing and dedicated teachers and staff and custodians and bus drivers and cafeteria workers doing amazing and powerful and important work every day to ensure the students of Worcester County grow up to be productive citizens for Worcester County. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mary Hathaway.
Good evening. My name is Mary Hathaway, and I live at 132 Camelot Circle in Berlin, Maryland. Over the past few weeks, there have been a lot of statistics shared about our schools, often reducing our incredible students-to-crime statistics. But these numbers don't represent my students. They don't represent the numbers of kids that I see every day. The great kids I see every day. So tonight, I wanted to share some other statistics that I gathered over the past two days about our three high schools. I'm going to do it in the same manner that it's been done the past couple weeks. Presidential Service Award winners: 67. National Honor Society Inductees: 260. AP enrollment: 398 students taking 577 exams. Allshore Choir and Band Honorees: 49. Allstate Choir Honorees: 5. Media Expo: 347 students turning in 660 projects. State Championship Sports Teams: 3. Theater Production Participants: Over 120. Ben Carson Scholarship Award Winners: 2. Science Olympiad Participants at the State Level: 23. National Board Certified Teachers: 18. Eastern Shore Literacy Association Young Authors Contest: 27 participants and five state finalists. Eastern Shore Academic Challenge Participants: 22, including the winners. College Board's Big Future National Recognition Program Qualifiers: 43. This is a small portion of the statistics I've collected in the past two days of the great things that our students and teachers are doing every day. I'm a proud Worcester County Public School graduate, educator, and now parent. I love the school system that I'm fortunate enough to work in every day, and I want this system to continue to thrive. Therefore, from the bottom of my heart, I say thank you. But to the county commissioners, I urge you to put politics aside and to fully fund our budget because we need to keep doing these great things for our students. If you would like to join us on April 14th at 2:00 PM at the Ocean City Board Walk, we will march in support of a fully funded budget. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Brian Robertson.
Brian Robertson, 103 Broad Street, Berlin, Maryland. I just wanted to read a letter to my daughter. Dear Ren, before you were born, your mom asked if we should bring a child into such divisiveness. My answer to her was, what if she's the one that changes the world? There's no doubt in my mind you will, and in a lot of ways, you already have. You made it through a pandemic and are finishing your first year of elementary school. Behind the scenes, there is a struggle to fund public schools. There is a lot of controversy on what that should amount to. Like ours, other counties are awarding the lowest amount of funding legally possible. On the surface, they are claiming school systems are mismanaging funds. On the surface, they are claiming school systems are mismanaging funds and neglecting school safety, but if you dig deeper, you'll find that the real battle is an ideological one filled with personal interests. There are claims that your generation is violent and headed down dark paths. You are the COVID kids corrupted by inclusive initiatives. Every young generation has its unique challenges and will always be criticized and labeled by previous generations. It happened to ours, and it's happening to yours. When you're older and recognize these insults, I hope you will ignore them and make your accomplishments stand up like two tall birds perched on towering clenched fists. In the coming years, whether you're sitting in a classroom of sixteen or twenty-five, I hope you make friends and recognize and accept their differences. I hope you help them when they need help, and I hope you celebrate them when they need to be celebrated, and I hope they do the same for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rosa Zollinger.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rose Zollinger. I live, it's all right. I'm going to get it one of these days. I live in Berlin, Maryland, with my husband and three children, who attend Buckingham, Berlin Intermediate, and Stephen Decatur High School, respectively. I am also a school counselor at Snow Hill High School. Last June, not last July, I spoke for the first time to this board about my concerns regarding our budget. I was terrified. I've said many times I don't like public speaking, I'm more of a worker bee, and I don't like to make waves. But I also refuse to stand by silently while a member of this board, along with elected officials in now three different county offices, carry out a smear campaign that relentlessly attacks my colleagues, my students, and in some instances, my own children. When fear-mongering about the contents of our libraries and bathrooms doesn't get enough attention, they shift their focus to lavish lunches and car washes, school spirit weeks, then safety, then back to the budget. Around and around we go, never knowing what the next press conference or social media post will be about. They should be ashamed of themselves at the circus they have created, but it's become crystal clear to me, they are too far gone to even waste my energy on. So I am here again tonight instead to offer my gratitude. Thank you, Delia Holland, Tristan Melvin, and Catalina Lizadder, stellar student reps from each of our three high schools who dutifully sit through these meetings, listening to so much negativity and nastiness each month. And thank you to Dr. John Andes, Ms. Lena McComas, Mr. Bill Buchanan, Mr. Bill Gordy, Mr. Donald Smack, and Mr. Todd Ferrante, for all you do to actually support our public school system in spite of this relentless campaign to scare and shame an entire community at the expense of our greatest resources, our children, and our children's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Paul Fidelli.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Paul Fidelli, Ocean Pines. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, since our county commissioners are too chicken shit to hear from us. Sorry for my blunt and forward manners. I'm not originally from here. Haven't quite mastered the southern technique of blending insults with kindness, but used to being a little more direct. I was hoping to speak tonight about school safety, but I couldn't find the type of data I was looking for on the state attorney website. I'm sure it's there, they probably just filed it in the wrong place. I'll leave the Delmarva Pearl Clutches Club to take care of that. I do want to thank you all for voting for a budget that prioritizes our staff and students. Everyone except for Mrs. Addis, and to you, ma'am, bless your heart. In anticipation of being short-changed again by the, excuse me, county commissioners, I'd like to offer some of my nearly forty years of experience in large corporations. When you have a problem that's outside of your control, you need to make it the other person's problem. And so I have a couple of suggestions that I would like to put forward in helping to resolve these budget issues. Number one, eliminate all the sports. Period. No more Friday Night Lights basketball. We're not here to produce outfits. We're here to educate the children in our community. There's been one NFL player from WCPS, he was a transfer. High school sports are the only sports that schools are expected to financially support. Every other level of sport, from elementary through adulthood, is paid for by private institutions and the participants. It's time to normalize this with high school sports as well. And if people here have a problem with that, call your county commissioners and tell them to fully fund our schools. Thank you. Speaking of the commissioners, if you're forced to cut positions, I would suggest that you start and cut deepest at Ocean City Elementary. Maybe if Mrs. Fiori was faced with the day-to-day realities of extreme budget cuts, this might become more of a table, kitchen table issue in her home, and she could help Commissioner Fiori, who campaigned as a strong schools advocate, to refocus his priorities.
Mr. Fidelli, I ask you to wrap it up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next speaker Nancy Mickelson. Mickelson, I'm sorry. I'll get it right one of these days. Sorry, Nancy.
My name is Nancy Mickelson. I live in North Ocean Pines, and tonight I came here to thank all school personnel for their efforts to keep our Worcester County students safe, both physically and emotionally. I have four grandchildren, two of whom have gone all the way through the system, two are still in the system. Each of those four have either been the target of aggression or unfortunately have caused some aggression at times. And so our family is very aware of how the schools handle situations like this. Those students have gone through four different schools in this system, and in every case, my family has been notified in a very timely and supportive way of what has occurred. If consequences were necessary for the child, consequences were had. In short, my family's experience with school management of disciplinary measures has been exemplary. I know I'm just speaking for one family. But I believe that our family's success can be attributed largely to the relationship that teachers, staff, and administration build with their entire school population. When I tell someone in the school who my grandchild is, that person invariably can put a face to a name. Having spent much time in schools myself as an intern supervisor during my twenty years at Salisbury University, or when I was visiting during American Education Week, when I have chaperoned field trips, I've seen firsthand why that staff knows my grandchildren, because they know all the children in their schools. I'd like to caution against secondhand reports of what has occurred in the schools. School officials have recognized that children may not always behave as we would like, but the important point is the response from the school officials. And I want to thank you all for the responses you have given our family.
Thank you. Mr. Darren Lombardo.
Good evening, Board. My name is Darren Lombardo. I'm with the Delmarva Parent Teacher Coalition, representing parents and teachers in the county that are underrepresented. This evening, I wanted to talk about school safety, and I also wanted to talk about it from a standpoint of restorative justice practices, which was mentioned here tonight. Restorative justice practices implemented in the school, I urge the board to really look at this closely over time, because what we're going to see is, we always strive for a reduction in numbers of incidences, how we handle situations. But my concerns, our concerns with this, is that the numbers are decreasing because there's a lack of reporting. And so another thing that was mentioned this evening was applying an equity lens. Applying an equity lens is to apply partiality to a judgment call or a situation. And I wanted to strongly encourage you to like really look at that, because we're not to look at our students differently. They're all the same, okay? They're a precious child, and we are to handle them with care. And if we apply an equity lens, we look at attributes such as color, any type of physical attributes, that's not necessary. That child has a soul, and we are to handle that with respect. And so as far as restorative justice practices, I'm going to challenge you to, I'm going to challenge you to apply that as it relates to your relationship with law enforcement officials, to restore the harm that's been done to the community and the harm that has been done with law officials that have a sworn duty to protect the county and the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Abbott.
Good evening. Good evening. John Abbott, Pocock City. Thank you for the night meeting. I'm here tonight to urge you all to stop with the charades, political theater, propaganda. This is not a charade, this is not a movie, this is not a joke. Safety is first. Everyone in the county knows what's going on in some of our schools. It's not a secret. Everybody knows what's really going on. Maintaining, minimizing safety, we just heard it again, concerns and refusing to cooperate with law enforcement is a very bad look and sets us up for a liability. You've been warned, and now it's all on you. You're trying to keep from getting a black eye in the press when you've already got a black eye in the public. Issuing and training teachers with Ucaroo protective padding in 2022 is fostering lawlessness. Encouraging students to hit a teacher with padding on, is that the life skill that you wish for them to walk out of school with? I wouldn't advise it. Again, minimizing safety is not the answer, or you won't have to worry about class sizes or teachers. They'll all be gone. They'll leave the school system. I talked to a man just last night that said he was coming to speak because he's had enough with the way things are handled in school, but he changed his mind. He said he's not going to speak tonight, he's just going to pull his kids from Worcester County Public Schools at the end of the year. You should be welcoming state's attorney and sheriff's help. You should be more than cooperative. In reference to the M O E propaganda, stop. This is an insult to the intelligence and the teacher, to the teachers and citizens of Worcester County. According to a teacher union statement, and I quote, "Worcester County educators' salaries have been seeing the second lowest statewide growth over the last fifteen years and have the lowest starting salary in the state of Maryland." Do you really expect teachers and citizens to believe that after asking for millions of dollars over and over, over fifteen years, and teachers still not getting adequate raises, that people are really going to believe that? And then on top of that, you've asked for thirty-seven million more dollars on top for administrative building. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Megan Seiler.
Hi. My name is Megan Seiler. I live in Wycomico County, but I teach at Stephen Decatur High School, and my daughter attends Ocean City Elementary. To start, I would like to thank my building administration, who have never asked me to be quiet. They have never asked me to silence my words or my voice. And I'd also like to extend my appreciation to this board, which I believe have found their voice this year. I am not a silent teacher, and I will never stop advocating for my profession. I am not a silent teacher because I want everyone to know how amazing my students are, how amazing your kids are. The narratives that get the most attention are negative, but I can assure you that that is not what I see every day. I see students work hard every day. I see students help special education kids with annotating text. I see new friendships form over small group projects. I see students help teachers pick up dropped papers in the hallway. I see struggling students celebrate over an earned B grade. I am not a silent teacher because I know firsthand small classes' sizes works. I have had classes as big as thirty-six and as small as eleven. Does every student receive the same lesson? Yes. Does every student receive the same amount of attention? No. A larger class size does not allow a teacher to give individualized instruction to as many students as a smaller class-sized dots. That's just common sense. From a parental stance, my daughter is an extremely shy and extremely good kid. My fear is that in a larger class, she won't get attention because she's a good listener and a rule follower, and she's a quiet kid. I worry she won't find confident enough to speak up for help in a classroom with more kids. I am not a silent teacher because my six-year-old wants to be a teacher. The first time I used my voice in this room was last July, and my daughter loves to watch that video clip. I must be doing something right if my daughter wants to grow up to be like with me. So no, Karen Abbott, I will not be a silent teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tom Simon.
Good evening, Board. My name is Tom Simon. I would like to point out that I live in Worcester County, and I have kids that go to school in the school system, unlike some of the previous speakers. I'm here tonight to express my gratitude for your unwavering commitment to the students and teachers of Worcester County Public Schools, despite facing attacks and harassment from various quarters, including the Worcester County Commissioners, the Sheriff's Office, and the state's attorney. As a parent of a child enrolled in Worcester County Public Schools, I fully support safe schools and would like to see adjacent county agencies contribute in a professional, constructive, and meaningful way. I'd like to direct my comments to the county commissioners, particularly Commissioner Abbott. It's troubling to witness a commissioner who voted against public comment at commissioner meetings now actively encouraging her associates on personal social media platforms to speak at this very meeting. Such a double standard is not only disingenuous but undermines the principles of fairness and Commissioner Abbott's favorite word, transparency. I urge the county commissioners to set aside their political affiliations and personal agendas and to refrain from interfering with the elected Board of Education's rightful jurisdiction. It's imperative that funding for Worcester County Public Schools in fiscal year twenty-five is fully restored. Failure to do so risks tarnishing the legacy of what is undeniably one of the state's finest public education systems. I implore the county commissioners to prioritize the well-being and future of our students and educators over political posturing. Let us work together to uphold the integrity and excellence of Worcester County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Matt Westbrook.
Hi, thank you. Some of my things have been said already, and Ms. Hathaway stole some of my thunder with the good things. But my daughter is one of the state finalists in the Young Authors Contest, and I want to also give a special thanks to all my children's teachers and support staff at BEES, past and present, along with the administration and the counselor, for encouraging them to do their best every single day. I truly don't know how teachers do it with so little space in their small little pods. It's worth repeating, if you care, build the bear. Additionally, I encourage the public to question the motives of the handful of citizens and elected officials who continue to push false narratives, fear, and outrage against our schools. schools. I encourage these handful of citizens, actually, I challenge the handful of citizens and elected officials who continuously find fault with public schools to open their eyes and acknowledge any of the good that's happening every day in our buildings. I encourage the county commissioners to review the proposed budget with good intentions, refrain from moving the goalposts, and to work together with the Board of Ed to secure proper funding for our schools. I encourage the Board of Ed to provide information to the best of your abilities and put differences aside to work with the county commissioners to fund the proposed budget. And I also encourage the public to find and use your voice. Let your elected officials know what you expect of them and hold them accountable for pre and post-election statements and actions. Ultimately, an MOE budget solely hurts students, parents, staff, and the quality of education that we expect and that all of our children deserve here in Worcester County. Thank you.
Next speaker is Justin Milburn.
How you doing? I'm Justin Milburn from 831 Pokemoke, I'm sorry, 831 White Exelon, Pokemoke City, Maryland. The gentleman earlier said, "Everyone knows what's going on. Everyone doesn't know what's going on." Has any of you or the Commissioner Abbott went into schools to actually talk to the students or does she just want to label them as young thugs? I've had the privilege to coach the Pokemoke Middle School Future Warriors. I've had the privilege to talk to each and every one of my over 40 young, amazing young men that she has labeled as thugs. I want all of you just to take 20 minutes out of your day just to go to not just Pokemoke, any school, just to hear their voice. All of these kids come from different backgrounds and they just want to fight and chant. I go there sometimes three times a week just to walk with these young men and young ladies. And every, every one of them has the same story, we just want to be heard. She doesn't give them a chance to be heard. My son, we're fighting a battle with her right now that no one knows about because she tries to sweep it under the rug. My daughter's been spit on. We went to her. She swept it under the rug. We have video footage of my son being assaulted and he had to defend himself. She swept that under the rug. As a black male parent, do you see any more black males out here? No. I stand for these young men and women that don't have a voice. And once again, if you could just take 20 minutes out of your day to go encounter or just talk to either student in any school just to see their thoughts on what's going on in the public school system and hear their voice, I think you guys would have a better understanding of what actually goes on in the community. It doesn't just take me, it takes everyone. And at this moment, I feel like I'm alone fighting a battle by myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Gwen Lehman.
It is a sad day when individuals who sought positions of responsibility in Worcester County government deliberately create an antagonistic relationship with the Board of Education while repeatedly defaming members of the central office staff. Using what has become a standard practice for extreme right-wing ideologues, they spread fear, they threaten retribution, warn of dire circumstances, consequences, and sow seeds of distrust in one of our most important civic institutions, public education. Increasingly, it is becoming clear that there is a vendetta, a prolonged bitter campaign against Superintendent Taylor, Dr. Annette Wallace, and Chief Financial Officer Vince Tolbert. Divide and conquer tactics are being employed in an effort to turn faculty and staff against administration. This campaign is being conducted with no regard for collateral damage. Our schools, our teachers, our support staff, our standing in the state, even our kids can all be damned in this concerted effort to defame, damage, and destroy the professional reputations of those holding top positions in our school system, including some school-level administrators. For all the protestations I have heard here regarding student aggression and bullying, you would think everyone could at least agree that aggressive bullying is not only unacceptable among children, but also among adults. Thank you.
Next speaker is Brenda Bardado.
Brenda Bardado from Ocean Pines. Good evening. I want to thank all of you for all of your hard work. I've heard so many wonderful things. I've heard the students telling wonderful things that are happening in their school. However, I just wanted to express my concerns about the safety of the teachers and students in the school. I've seen the press conferences and was very concerned. I know that all of the staff members' priorities are educating our children and caring for the emotional and physical well-being of all children. Unfortunately, this year, I've witnessed more than one parent give testimony to this very board about how their child continued to be bullied in school. One parent had stated that he had contacted people on this very board and they did not get back to him and he was very upset. I believe that that is a mistake. If a parent has a child being bullied, we need to worry about that particular child. And there wasn't one, there was more than one. It was actually the first word meeting that I came to and I was, I couldn't believe it. I was very appalled. Every child deserves to have a safe learning environment. In addition, I viewed the videos, I must say, and it was horrifying. After viewing the videos, it was, I know, I witnessed the violence in the hallways, the bathrooms, and cafeteria. And I know that's probably not an everyday occurrence, but it was very frightening to see that students were in the bathroom with their phones, beating other children. I believe that we all know that schools are not a perfect place and they're not perfect and I believe that your approach is, "We're doing all we can," is, let me tell you, probably not. There's always more that we can do. There's always room for improvement. After listening and reading your rebuttal, I realized it was filled with lots of, I was, we were planning it, we were discussing it, we were exploring it, we were studying it, but there was no real substance in what you were saying that you had, you had done. I believe that the BOE and the law enforcement owe it to the community to work together to make schools a safer place to work and learn. And partnering together, one sentence, listening, finding solutions, and not placing blame is a beginning to solve some of these problems.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jackie Cutlip.
Hello, my name is Jackie Cutlip. I live in Berlin, Maryland. I would start by saying thank you for getting rid of the Wednesday half-days. Just going to say thank you for that. I think a lot of people agree. I'm not a politician and I am a mother of three children in your schools and I'm here tonight to voice my concerns on school safety. And y'all know I've been doing this for 10 years. This is nothing new. It's before some of you were even here. School safety should never be a battle and I don't feel that it should have ever come to this. I know that our schools, some of my kids' teachers are right behind me, they're lucky to have these kids and our kids are lucky to have the students. I don't think anybody's debating the quality of our students. Some things might have been said that I don't agree with, but I think we have great students and I think we have great teachers and I think that's one thing we could actually agree on behind me. But as a parent, I've been watching this unfold for many years and I truly believe that we're here partly due to the fault of some people in this room and possible directions that they're giving their admin. There's been a clear lack of transparency, honest communication, there's a trend now in minimizing actual assault, downplaying the frequency of these, and no consistency with firm discipline. Your main job is to educate our children and somewhere along the way, you have lost sight of this. It's very clear that schools now focus on rehabilitating students. I get that, I understand the why and let me be clear, I also do not agree with that. I know that it's necessary to maybe sway some kids to a better way, but that should never be prioritized over a safe learning environment or at the expense of the other 99% of your students and that is happening regardless of what people want to believe. You guys at the BOE are the top and you have a duty to do what is right and protect all of our children. I've never really heard along this battle a very clear, loud, and definite, "We are sorry, we shouldn't have done that and we are wrong." And I know firsthand, some of these things should have been said to some people. I'm not alone. This is causing a huge divide in the community. You see red shirts, white shirts, fans, people, teachers, friends, coworkers. It's not good. But the sheriff's post has 10,000 views, so obviously people agree. And I would think your main goal is to get 100% of us to agree on school safety. I ask that you lead with consistency, honesty, integrity, and firm discipline because our kids deserve better.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brittany Tigler.
Brittany Tigler, 111 Tale of the Fox Drive, Ocean Pines. Good evening, board members and Worcester County community. I am a parent whose children attend Snow Hill Middle School and I'm here tonight to thank you, the board members and the executive leadership, who walk the delicate balance of student safety and public notification every day. When I send my children out the door, I know that these leaders are working to put systems in place to ensure that I am aware of the things that I need to know while also ensuring that my children's personal matters are protected from public scrutiny. I applaud the leaders who have prioritized student dignity over some misguided desire for the public to know every detail, as if watching a soap opera. How does knowing every detail make our children safer? Children, teens, young adults, kids, pre-teens, no matter the word that you use, they will make mistakes. I am grateful that my children have been able to make these mistakes around people that allow them to learn, that give them appropriate consequences, and protect their privacy. I am grateful that when my children make the snakes, mistakes, I get calls from teachers, the nurse, school counselors, assistant principals, and principal, but a school or district-wide notification is only made if it impacts the majority of the population. I am grateful that WCPS leaders are willing to share aggregated data, that means all the data in a big clump, that allows our community to see trends in student incidents, but refused the request to put together a video of individual school fights. I am grateful for the leaders who stood up for our students, that prioritize educational best practices and law enforcement working together. We operate on a need-to-know basis and if you're sitting here saying that you didn't know something happened, then you probably didn't need to know because it didn't have to do with your child. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kate McCloskey.
Good evening and thank you for this evening meeting. Appreciate that so much. I'm on, I'm here on behalf of teachers tonight. My dad was a teacher for over 32 years and a coach and I just adore him and have watched the impact he's had on kids and I'm a, I care so much and I'm a firm believer with taking care of our teachers. I'm just here to say, "Let's put teachers first." When, when we get a budget renewed every year of 100 million-plus dollars, I want to see teachers at the front of the line. I want to see their salaries, their raises. I want to make sure they're front of the line because without them, we don't have a learning environment. And I got to tell you, as I researched this for tonight, every, all the research points to that the most important in-school influence affecting student learning, student proficiency, is that frontline instructional teacher. And I just want to see them being taken really, really good care of. And just like all of us feeling the pinch of our budget in our households, you know, we have to prioritize our mortgage or rent, our food, our electric bill, our car, you know, and then some years, we might not be able to get a new refrigerator or go on that extra vacation, but we make sure we take care of the most important and our teachers are very, very important too and they translate to student proficiency and student success. And so I just would love to, just to say that there are going to be some tough decisions, I'm sure, that are non-essentials and if we can push those off, never let our teachers suffer during a time like now. Put them first each and every year and I appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kennedy Sneed.
I'm Kennedy Sneed and I live in Pokemoke City. I want to begin by saying I appreciate all of the dedication and support that you give students in Worcester County schools and I'd like to thank you. I find our schools to be a very safe and enjoyable place to be every day. I'd also like to thank you for the opportunities I'm given in our schools. I'm a student who made allshore band, West Virginia University honors band, was in the school play, and I am a choir. I have seen firsthand that Worcester County Public Schools offer an exceptional education and value student safety and comfort more than anything else. Our schools offer amazing support for our students in and outside of the school environment. Additionally, anytime there may be an altercation in the school environment, it is quickly resolved and more often than not, it doesn't happen between the same students again. With this in mind, it is extremely unfair to our students that the authorities whose job it is to protect the students against unjust punishment and accusations are the ones who are responsible for these remarks. And as this issue has arisen, a common theme has shown itself, which is that this is especially targeted against people of color. Additionally, several Pokemoke High School fights have been brought up on the news. Most of these fights were not recent. I feel that putting these fights on the news publicly gave Pokemoke High School a bad reputation. However, Pokemoke High School is one of the safest schools along the eastern shore, but due to the particularly high percentage of people of color, our county schools are targeted. While this is happening, I ask you to continue the support you give to our students. With your support, regardless of the way our schools are portrayed through the media, you can continue to keep students comfortable and safe in our schools. Thank you again for your continued dedication and support and I thank you for this opportunity.
Next speaker is Clarence Heath.
I greet the board and the dedicated folks who are here tonight. I, my name is Clarence Heath. I live in Westover, Maryland, Somerset County. My three oldest grandchildren attended Steen Decatur High. Oh, have graduated, have done very well. They participated in, one was Ocean City Fire Cadet, one was junior ROTC, participated in choir course, track and field, honor society. I am very proud of my grandchildren and the education they got here. I am a alumni of Pokemoke High School. I graduated class of 1972, 52 years ago. I'm also a property owner in Worcester County. I own a couple of houses here, but I want to speak tonight about school safety. Back in October, two, the two top elected law enforcement positions in this county made as one of their top recommendations that county schools needed to hire a qualified, experienced school safety expert. Question is, why has it taken four months to write the job description? It appears that foot- It appears that foot dragging is something that needs to be overcome. How many more kids and teachers need to be assaulted before this is made a priority? There have been teachers, there have been reach-out, teachers have reached out saying that they hide in their classrooms, because they do not feel safe in the hallways. And the sad thing is, these same teachers watch what their principals and the superintendent are saying publicly about our schools being safe, and the law enforcement is wrong. But these teachers see crime escalating, and they are more concerned where, they're concerned but have nowhere to turn, because no one has their back. So they suffer in solace. I wanted you to know, because the solution is in your hands. It would require transparency of what is going on in our schools, and would require you taking care, taking a caring approach to our teachers and student safety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kim Prince.
Thank you for your time. My name is Kim Prince, I reside in West Ocean City. I have three daughters in the public school system, they're in grades four, six, and And we moved here eight years ago, specifically for Worcester County schools. My children have thrived in the schools here. And I will say, it's because of, and as you've heard tonight of all the achievements, it's because of the small classroom sizes. It's because of the nurture, the guidance, the love that my children get from every single staff person at the schools. And I will tell you, my 13-year-old is autistic, and many other extra needs. Sorry, I'm getting all emotional. She requires a lot of extra, and one of the extras she's been given since kindergarten is summer academy. And I am speaking on behalf of every single parent that has a child with special needs. If the summer academy goes away, our children will stop thriving. The summer academy has, has to stay. Our budget for the schools has to be supported. And it's not only for summer academy, it's for our county, for our future, our students to thrive. Our students are, will be your future doctors. They will be your future nurses, your social workers, your teachers. And we need to continue to see these achievements happen. Sorry for getting emotional.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Susan Curran.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm Susan Curran, and I live in Ocean Pines, Maryland. I just wanted to comment on about a general thing, that will ultimately be budget-related. And I want to compliment all the teachers and parents, and the very extraordinary story shared here tonight. It's always impressive, and I'm an optimist for the future, so kudos to all of you. Across the country, and in predominantly conservative Worcester County, Maryland, almost all parents, when surveyed, do not want their schools to indoctrinate their children to believe that they could have been born a different gender. At the Shaw Elementary School, one example, and a true story, that was told to me firsthand by a local mom, was that one night after dinner, she had her little four-year-old little boy on her lap, and they were just, you know, carousing a little bit, rocking back and forth. And she says, "Oh, you're my special little boy." And he says, "No, mommy, I'm not." And she's, "What do you mean, you're not?" And she asked him again, "Aren't you my special little boy?", you know, a little baby talk with your four-year-old. And he said, "No, mommy, I'm a girl." Well, she was, you know, dumbfounded, horrified, like, where did he get that from? He's four years old, he's barely out of the womb. You know, they want to jump up with capes and fly off the table like Superman at four years old, to things like that. But he didn't, you know, she couldn't imagine where that seed was planted, that he would tell her he was a girl. He's in pre-K, mind you, four years old. She was horrified, and kind of wondered, where was this seed planted? So, again, as the mother, I really couldn't believe the story myself, but we live in a new world. This child did not think of that on his own. That seed was somehow planted, or that idea, or that notion, and that somehow gender indoctrination is allowed in our public school curriculum, to a very young and inappropriate age. So as more and more parents become aware of this, around the country, and here locally in Worcester County, parents are withdrawing their children from public schools to either homeschool, or find a way to pay for private schools. So the questions I pose to the board are, number one, why is gender indoctrination allowed in public schools' curriculum to pre-K in elementary school-aged children? And more importantly, in the long-term picture, how will a continued decline in enrollment affect the school board's annual budget, which is based on enrollment?
Curran, I'm going to ask you a rapid update. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello again, everybody. My name is Shannon Bone, and I am the proud teacher that teaches, bless you, at Stephen Decatur High School. When I first came to Worcester County, it was explained to me that I was a come here, and not a from here. I thought that was a relatively odd way of putting it, however, I appreciate the journey that has brought me here to Worcester County Public Schools, now more than ever. This journey has allowed me to have an outsider's perspective on the ins and outs of this county. A few observations that I've made during my time here. Our children's education and well-being get held at ransom for political gains. Our sheriff and district attorney communicate via Facebook Live, and our county commissioners vote to not hear from their constituents. Odd. Also strange to me that some of our elected officials commend and wish to model other counties, such as Cecil County, who allow public comment at their county commissioner meetings. Seems to me that we lack, heavy lack of transparency on what our public officials truly want, as the narrative continues to be rewritten. Logic would say that I made a mistake uprooting my entire family and coming to Worcester County, as the last three years have been shameful, yet I continue to disagree. During my time here, I've had the honor and privilege to work with some of the most dedicated, resilient, and intelligent educators. Shout out to Decatur Science Department. Every day, I get to teach kind, caring, and eager students, although exhausting. I've been welcomed with open arms into America's coolest small town, and I've seen a community show up for our kids, time and time again. I have learned that Worcester shares the same morals and values that I was raised on. It takes a village, and we clearly have a great one. I've witnessed a community come together to fight for what is right, and battle to protect all our children. I've been inspired by our community, and continue to feel validated in that I'm exactly where I'm supposed to be. Thank you to our Board of Ed members, Commissioners Purnell and Matresik, for your continued and outward support of our public education system, and understanding the importance of investing in public education. Moreover, thank you to this incredible community for continuing to show up and stand up for what's right. Thank you.
Thanks. Next speaker is Tristan Melvin.
Thank you for the bless yous, I really appreciate that. Good evening, my name is Tristan Melvin, she/her, and I reside in Polkemook City, Maryland. I want to preface by saying that the negativity, beyond the negativity this board may encounter, I've always felt that Worcester County is an incredible place to be. And with that being said, we've seen that as one issue comes to a halt, another one presents itself. I would like to thank the Worcester County Board of Education for their continued support of Worcester County students, and for standing their ground against extreme accusations towards my peers and classmates. When observing the attacks against the students of Worcester County, a common theme has presented itself. Students of color have been put in negative light by the forces that aim to dispel diversity in our education. I'm sure the Board of Education is aware, but I would like to present my gratitude, along with the other students of the county. Though violence does exist, it is not a raging issue in our schools, and when even a spark arises, I find it to be extinguished quickly. From personal experience, it is a fact that most, if not all, students that have been involved in a physical altercation at Polkemook High School, have never been involved in another altercation afterwards. Students are not all the same. We are all different humans, and must be treated by individual cases. If we treat every kid the same, with a cookie cutter cutout, we must remove all aspects of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We cannot exploit and criminalize our students. I have felt unsafe in the hallways of this building while being targeted by a county commissioner, my city's commissioner, and even in that chair, while being targeted by public speakers. These are adults, but never in my school hallways. As I'm sure you're aware, the publicized view of our students can lead to a lessened budget for our education, lessening the compensation for our teachers, which ultimately leads to our class sizes being affected. Small class sizes are extremely important to the success of students everywhere. I personally have excelled this way. I, Tristan Melvin, stand with you, the Board of Education, as me being a student representative can prove, in resisting the extreme accusations against students of Worcester County, and in receiving a fully funded budget for the betterment of staff and students. Once again, thank you for all of your hard work and dedication to Worcester County education. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Lindsey Green Tire.
I don't really need this, but Lindsey Green Tire, Berlin, Maryland, multiple kids in the county, lived here for quite a while, and I'm actually here to address the school safety as well. My concerns are that we are allowing hate groups, such as the pins we've seen around here, pretty little Moms for Liberty hate groups, spread false information about our public schools, spread the far-right propaganda, promote privatization, as we saw the moment Ms. Addis was elected, the very evening she posted how you can use public funds to privatize your child's education. By disparaging our public schools, they seek to destroy them, and use the funds for private schools, further disenfranchising already impoverished children, further segregating our schools. In my classroom, I expect my children to look at their speaker, and I have watched as we have had children speak, parents speak, these two young adults. Ladies, right? Okay, sorry, a little nervous in myself. Speak, these educated, future adults that will be a part of our community. And Ms. Addis, you have failed to give them your attention. In my classroom, that would be shown as disrespect, because you look at your speaker, because everybody can learn from everybody else. And unfortunately, you have chosen not to do that. You are too hell-bent on destroying our schools.
Miss Tire.
And belittling our community.
Miss Tire.
I apologize.
Can't choose.
I know I am breaking rules, like taking school data.
You have to choose. You have to keep personal.
You're right, I apologize. Like, I don't know, putting public, our children's faces on camera. I was under the impression FERPA prevented things like that from publicizing private incidences in the school. It's your job to protect our kids against incidents like this. I'm not sure how you're going to do that, with such a strong force against you, but you are supported by the majority of this community.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak tonight? If so, let me know. Okay, thank you very much for your comments, and we're going to be moving forward to curriculum instruction, and I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Wallace.
Good evening, I have to find my spot here. I am very excited to ask Dr. Brian Phillips and Mrs. Diane Shortz to join us this evening for a presentation on the NEST. We've heard lots of wonderful things about our school community. I'm grateful for our teachers, and our staff, and our students, especially, because they're why we do what we do. And as an educator, one of my goals, and my dreams for Worcester County Public Schools, was that we know, you know, we have an excellent culinary program, and students cook every day. And for years, we wondered why our early childhood education program at the Technical High School wasn't thriving the way we would like it to thrive. And so one of my dreams for that program was that we would have a full-fledged, full-running daycare, that could fully sustain itself. The problem is, is making that happen, there's a lot of cost to get that up off the ground. And so, thanks to these two, Ms. Shortz, and our wonderful grant-writing committee, and excellent leadership of the NEST, which you'll hear about tonight, our school system opened the first childcare center in our school system, the NEST. I hope people don't leave, because you're going to get, this is the good part. The NEST, and you're going to hear all about the wonderful things that are going on, and I'm proud to tell you that we now have an early childhood education program, with full of students, who are excited, who are going to leave us with a certification, and are currently getting as paid apprentices to work in our childcare center. So, not to steal your thunder, but...
Can you hear me? Hear me? Good evening, everyone, good evening, board. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to share this exciting project that Ms. Shortz and myself brought to Worcester County Public Schools. So, we came together, as Dr. Wallace said, with a need. And that need was that we needed to replace an outgoing early childhood education program, program of study at the CTE next door, Worcester Tech. And Ms. Shortz, coordinator of early childhood, and myself, came together and applied for a grant, and that grant was called Maryland Rebuilds. And we, through that grant, ended up hiring a director of our childcare center next door, and that's who you see pictured there. So those are kind of the players involved. As I said before, there was a need. Our outgoing early childhood education program needed to be revamped. And then, when we wrote the grant, there's some things that I'll go over with you here. Obviously, if you don't already know, we really wanted to expand our offerings for early childhood education here. So, through this grant, we were able to open the NEST Early Childcare Center in Worcester Technical High School, which we were blessed, because it already had the space. So, that helped us to be able to offer childcare in Worcester County. In addition, we wanted to replace that outgoing early childhood program of study with a new one. And the reason that we needed to do that, was because the state was requiring that anyone who works in that industry have what's called a Child Development Associate. In order to get a Child Development Associate, those kids would need to work with preschool-aged children for at least 480 hours to qualify. So it's a big challenge. And through that grant, we were able to do both. We were able to open this childcare center, have all of the resources for that, and bring preschool-aged kids to Worcester Technical High School, so that our early childhood youth apprentices had access to them. So it's a little complicated. We've all heard of Blueprint. Blueprint also is requiring that 45% of our graduates earn an industry-recognized credential, and it just so happens to be that that Child Development Associate I talked about was one of those.
Okay, so he had the difficult part, I had the good part. I got to actually get the childcare center up and running. So like Brian said, in the Blueprint, I should be talking to you. In the Blueprint, pillar one is early childhood. And one of the big things is, we need to have every student possible be prepared for kindergarten, when they enter our school system. In order to do that, we need to build our childcare centers, and we need to build our pre-K programs within the public school. And so, by opening up the NEST, we have two-year-olds and a three-year-old program. The twos will go into threes, and so we are helping grow our students, and that is going to hopefully help us with kindergarten readiness, when they enter the public school. going to hopefully help us with kindergarten readiness when they enter the public school. And what I've done is I've just put the data up there for this year. Last year overall, Worcester County Public Schools was at a 72.3. This year, we were at a 77.5. So, we've grown 5% in one year, which is awesome. And I feel that that's because of the time and effort that this county has done to put in additional pre-K classrooms, pre-K 3, pre-K 4, expanding us to full day, and building those relationships with the childcare centers that are out there, one being the NEST.
So, as I said, on January 4th, we were awarded $1.3 million through that Maryland Rebuilds Grant, and we were able to do lots of things next door. We were able to put in a $330,000 playground, which is out back behind Worcester Tech. We were able to kind of revamp a space that was already there when the building was constructed into the NEST, which is our childcare center. And then, we were able to purchase all of the things that it takes for a youth apprenticeship to run. For those of you who aren't familiar with the youth apprenticeship, youth apprentices are kind of what you think. An apprentice would come in and learn by doing. So, this model allows 12 youth apprentices, that's how many we currently have, to come to school and physically work with those preschool-aged children, which was needed in order for them to qualify for the Child Development Associate. So, come December, we will have 12 seniors, there'll be seniors this year, who will graduate with this Child Development Associate, which will allow them to walk across the stage and immediately enter the workforce by way of this credential. Here are our staff over on the left-hand side, our little preschool-aged students, and our two teachers. We only had one aide at the time, now we have two, and our lovely director, which you saw a picture of earlier, Ms. Stephanie Timmons. Over on the right-hand picture, you'll see some of our youth apprentices. I don't think all 12 are in the photo, but that's some of our high schoolers there working in the NEST.
And again, I think, Brian, they also leave with 12 credits. You have that on and up? There's...okay. I'll be quiet. All right. So, yes, we do have one director, two teachers, and we just hired our second assistant, because our numbers are growing, which is exciting. It is a year-round childcare center that can hold up to 40 students, two and three-year-olds. It's full-time, part-time, they get a snack, they have to bring their own lunch, they get to play on a very nice playground that is set up to, when we become accredited, it'll be Maryland accreditation expects certain things out on a playground. So, it'll be ready to go when that happens. Just like within our classrooms, they have their own iPads, they have Apple TVs. We promote the readiness and everything that we need through the academics. They use the exact same curriculum that we use in our pre-K 3 classrooms, which is Frog Street. So, when they enter into our pre-K 4, we know exactly what level they should be on. We have Bright Wheel, which is kind of how the teachers share information with the families. I think you guys do Class Dojo out in the buildings and things, we have the Bright Wheel. And of course, we were able to purchase some vans so that when we do field trips, they can go.
I just want to touch a little bit on early childhood youth apprenticeship. Youth apprenticeship is already a part of the legislation under Blueprint. You'll be hearing more of it. It's an awesome program that Worcester has taken and run with, really, this year. We have several occupations approved for Worcester County Public Schools, and this was one that was able to work for us and be completely grant-funded. This whole initiative is grant-funded, but this is a new program that really allowed us to pilot a program such as this. Without setting up a youth apprenticeship, it would be really difficult for me to be able to get students, high school students, access to preschoolers during the school day, so that they could work towards those 480 hours needed for the credentials. So, really, bringing the childcare center to the Technical High School was the best option for us. And like I said, getting the Rebuilds Grant at $1.3 million was really the only way that we could make that happen. As a part of that, I had to write a program of study, a new program of study, in order to support this work that we were doing. And through that program of study, we were able to incorporate 12 articulated credits with Warwick Community College as well. It's a part of writing those programs, so it naturally happened. But I'm happy to say that those high schoolers can graduate and also walk into Warwick and already have 12 credits under their belt. So, if they wanted to continue their education and even major in early childhood education, they already have a leg up as a result of this program as well. They also get a CPR and first aid certification, which they're required to do in order to be candidates for the Child Development Associate. And then, we are also giving them an opportunity to be successful in the parapro assessment, which is also a required assessment for them to become educational assistants in Worcester County Public Schools. So, I'm happy to see that this opportunity has opened so many doors for high schoolers in a program that was otherwise going by the wayside because of these expectations with the CDA.
And the one part of the Blueprint, it talks about how, in a pre-K 3 and 4 classroom, now our educational assistants have to have a CDA, parapro is not enough, so they either need a BS, an AA, or a CDA. So, we've spent, over the past year and a half, trying to get our EAs classes and taking a test and getting them through that CDA. These 12 kids will graduate with that and can go right into a pre-K classroom and be an educational assistant, which is wonderful.
These are some photos of our preschool-aged kids, two and three-year-olds predominantly, and then some of our youth apprentices. Another photo of our space outside on the playground and inside as well. With $1.3 million, you can really set up a pretty awesome childcare center.
Before you take questions, I just want to give a shout-out to one more group in here that would be impossible for us to make the NEST work, and that's our school bus drivers, because they get our kids to the NEST every single day and our kids to school. They're the first line, and so, I know many of them are in the room this evening, I want to give you all a shout-out too, because if we couldn't get kids to Worcester Tech every day, this program wouldn't exist.
For members to have any questions? Dr. Annie's, I see.
No, I just want to commend you. I know a prior superintendent tried to get this done and failed.
No, you didn't.
Misably failed.
No, you did not.
So, I commend you for finally getting it done. I'm glad I'm here to recognize you and thank you for the hard work that you're doing. It's a win-win for everyone wins with this program. So, thank you so much for writing the grant, doing all the hard work, doing everything you do, and once again, proving that a prior superintendent just couldn't get the job done. Thank you.
We can thank Mr. Taylor for putting us in offices next to each other. That made it happen.
Brian, you mentioned sustainability.
So, the NEST Childcare Center, when Ms. Shortz and Dr. Wallace, we sat down to apply for this grant, the expectation was always that that grant would end, and that this would be a self-sustaining operation. And I can say that we are very close to being at that point now, and it's March. So, by the end of the school year, when this grant runs out, we will be at a self-sustaining system, where the revenue from the NEST does pay for the employees of that NEST. And I don't want to take all of the credit for that, I have to give a shout-out to the NEST staff. They work tirelessly to promote the NEST. If you haven't seen the signs around, you must live under a rock, because they're everywhere. We've got a huge eight-foot sign out front, and I really want to give a shout-out to Stephanie Timmons, the director of the NEST. She is a complete rock star and has really gotten us to that point.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, guys.
Definitely seeing pillar one and pillar three of the Blueprint in action. Speaking of rock stars, here comes Dr. Welch and another rock star, Ms. Apperenz. And I've known Dr. Welch for all 37 years of my existence in Worcester County, and I could not see of a better topic for her to present on, the importance of community partnerships. Those of you who do not know Dr. Welch's background, she started out as a teacher, obviously, but one of her major roles that I got to work with her at as a principal was as a Judy Center Coordinator, which was a huge role, was working with community partnerships. So, it was great to see that she and Ms. Apperenz were going to present on the partnerships that she's forming at Buckingham. So, as soon as she can project, we're gonna yell out the number for her to project here. You got it? That's okay, it should be coming up. Carrie's gonna help you in a second, if not. But as you know, Buckingham is a Title I school, so it's very important that, as a Title I school, that we reach out into our community and provide these services for our students. So, again, very happy to see Chris and Ms. Apperenz here. You're very welcome, I'm setting you up here.
You are.
There we go. So, Dr. Welch, onto you.
So, good evening, and we're here tonight to share with you how the power of partnerships works in a Title I school. Stacy, can you do that? Sorry. Vanna. So, five years ago, when Mr. Taylor came to me and said, "You're going to Buckingham," I cried first, because I love Snow Hill Middle School so much, but then, I came back and bounced back and said, "This is a great move for me." And he and Dr. Wallace and Ms. Shortz sent me on mission when I went down there. I had like 15 pages, and I had to go on this fact-finding mission. And what I learned by talking to all the stakeholders, teachers, the mayor, parents, faith community, is that the community wanted to see Buckingham back as a community school. And we kind of got away from that a little bit. So, we've worked really hard over the last five years to develop partnerships which enable us to do amazing things for our students. So, that's what we've been doing. We have now developed a multitude of partners that give us a ton of needed resources for our children.
So, at Buckingham, we need these partnerships, and we work so hard at Buckingham. Our students work so hard. They deserve for us to go above and beyond for them, and that's exactly why we need these partnerships, because we've made so many good relationships in the community that they help fund the extra things that we like to do. For instance, 10 minutes on a bounce house on one of the half-days, you know, that's an attendance incentive that we have done. We also like to do extra activities so we can bring our school community together, and then finally, to support our families.
I'm excited to say, several of our partners are right in the audience tonight, so they might see pictures of themselves. So, what we're gonna do is highlight some of the ways that these community partners support students at Buckingham. And I have to say, this is probably one of my favorite slides. It's summer school and after-school, which I know that I heard a parent talk about how important it is. It's really important at Buckingham, because we enroll over, last year, over 130 students for summer school. And I just want you to notice a couple, you can see all the partners. There are also probably five we forgot, but we went quick with it. But the fire department comes and hoses our kids down and makes like a big waterfall in the summertime during summer school, and it doesn't cost us anything, but wow, it's an exciting day after they've learned all day long. In the bottom corner, we've got a little friend there at Frontier Town last year. Bluewater sponsored our field trip there last year, it was fantastic. And the library and Kona Ice are other partners that we use in summer school and after-school. The things I'm showing you are things we wouldn't typically be able to do for students because of a budget crisis, that we're able to do because of our community partners. When you look at this back-to-school event, Ms. Shortz is the mother of this event, but I brought it to Buckingham, and it's called the Back-to-School Bash. We call it Bucky's Back-to-School Barbecue, and Bucky's our little bear that we mascot that we use. And you can see the different partners there. They lined up all around our blacktop area last year with resources for families. We also, you can see, the library showed up for us. And then, the other thing that happened is multiple community agencies came out with filled backpacks for our students, and that really is helpful for families that cannot afford back-to-school supplies. That way, every student comes back to school with a new bookbag, every student has new school supplies. That doesn't happen for everyone. I think the final thing I want to talk about, because there's people in this room that participated in this, the pictures you see at the top of the art supplies, when we got the news that our budgets, our MOI budgets were gonna be cut, we were, we didn't know what we were gonna do, especially with art. We have 531 students right now, and how is Melissa Reed gonna do that on half the money that she does, that she's had in the past? So, different agencies around the community, including the Arts Council, including the Worcester Democratic Committee, donate throughout the whole year, things so that we can keep our materials of instruction and art and the media center fresh. So, this is the last one I'm gonna talk about. We offer programs at Buckingham that we could not do if we didn't have our community partners. SNAP Ed is a nutrition program, they come in and kids get to taste vegetables like zucchini and cauliflower, and the SNAP Ed through the University of Maryland Extension Office takes care of that for us. We are able, we have a Girls on the Run program, and due to the generosity of the community fa...I'm sorry, United Way, we pay a very minimal fee for those girls to run, and that's not only a running program, but it's a self-esteem program for girls that really need to get together and build community. Probably, Mr. Booth's in the back, and so, he'll probably cheer when I say this. Probably, one of our biggest events and our most successful events all year is when we take all of our 4th graders to the Pokemoke YMCA, and they get swimming lessons. Now, you'd think, living in Berlin, that wouldn't be a problem, but we have a lot of kids that had never been in a swimming pool before. Think about that. They live 30 minutes from the ocean, less than, and they'd never been in a swimming pool. And you can see those kids getting water safety in the corner. They go for a whole week, and the teachers, when I said, "I'm so sorry, I know it's a lot," they looked at me and they said, "Sorry." It's the best thing we do all year, do not give that up. Jen Sills coordinates that for us, and we go to the Pokemoke YMCA and a grant pays for the buses to go. We get down there, and they have just the best time. I'm also very proud of our connection with the Big Brothers, Big Sisters program this year. They come to us with Biggs, and then we match them up with their little friends, and they come before school, after school, or even during the school day to mentor students.
So, when I first came to Buckingham as a school counselor, I have a teacher background and became a school counselor at Buckingham, something that I was amazed by was around the holidays, I got phone calls every day. What do your kids need? What can I do? What can I bring you? How can we help? Who needs Christmas presents? Who needs new clothes? Who needs Christmas pajamas? Who wants to go have, meet Santa, have breakfast with Santa? So, I was kind of like, oh my gosh, I didn't know I was supposed to do this as a school counselor, but it's become like part of a big job that I do during the holidays, and it's amazing, and it's all thanks to our community partners and the relationships that we continue to build. You wanna click? So, this is just some pictures, I mean, everything from full-on Christmas mornings to groceries, turkey dinners, bikes, hygiene products for the holidays, just anything you could possibly think of. People are reaching out, going grocery shopping, Christmas trees, Christmas decorations, anything you can think of. Breakfast with the Easter Bunny is coming up. And the next slide is just a complete list of a lot of the agencies and even individuals that reach out to help us. And then, another big part I had mentioned earlier is our PBIS program and student incentives and motivation. Like I said, our students work so hard, they deserve to have some fun sometimes. We've got agencies that reach out, and they provide free ice cream for all 531 students some days, and the kids love that, and they look so forward to that, because not every child can buy ice cream every day. We also have the Ocean City Berlin Optimists Club, who provided our Student of the Month t-shirts. And for a kid to get Student of the Month, they wear that t-shirt proudly. So, we're so thankful for that, because if we didn't have that partnership, we would not be able to get them t-shirts. And like Dr. Welch said, we're just touching on a few, but there's so many people that help us and agencies that help us. Sorry. And then, finally, like I mentioned PBIS before, we use a lot of our partnerships to help with some perks. So, every month, we have the Student of the Month program, and we also recognize our staff for all the amazing things that they're doing, and they may receive a gift card or a small gift from some of the local businesses or partnerships that we connect with.
Finally, I just want to touch on this, because I think this is the most powerful slide in the PowerPoint. I think often, we assume that everyone lives the same way we do, and what I learned after being in education for 36 years, is that people live differently than I do. And my kids at Buckingham, our kids at Buckingham, need extra things sometimes, so that they have their basic needs... have their basic needs met and they can be available for learning. And I think we overlook that sometimes. We bathe kids at Buckingham, some of them daily. We provide mental health, resources for families. We make sure they have coats. We make sure they have bookbags. We make sure they have school supplies. And I think probably in the world we live in, some people are saying, "But that's not your job." It is my job. It is my job to make sure that every kid has exactly what they need in order to be successful at school. And these partners that you see on all these different slides, you know, Randy's crew, he's sending two families to see the Easter Bunny and have breakfast for free on Saturday. You've got the Berlin Lions Club and the NAACP that are giving us gift cards, money, so that every single student at Buckingham gets a book at the book fair. Not just kids that can afford books, every student gets a book. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about our Buckingham families. These people step up and take care of other people's kids and give them what they need as well. You know, I have been so fortunate. I tell Mr. Taylor all the time, it was a life changer moving me to Buckingham because I belonged in an elementary school, and I think Dee would tell you that. But the work we do couldn't be done without all these people that work together as a generous community of people that love our kids. So that's us. Sorry about my voice tonight, but I didn't know if anyone had any questions regarding our presentation.
Chris, I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you as a leader there, because I've watched you at that school, and I spent my career on the North End, and certainly we have a lot of resources up there. But as you put up all those groups tonight, that's symbolic of what our community thinks of our schools. And you taking that in and then welcoming those leaders from our community and those community people, I've watched you do it, and I want to thank you and Ms. Appertons for your leadership at Buckingham, and especially how you approach the less fortunate. I'm like you, you know, a lot of those kids didn't grow up like I did. I had a coat. I had two parents. I had three meals a day. And so I have watched you take that school to a whole nother level. And what's great for me is, in the community that I live in and serve, I hear it all the time, how wonderful Buckingham Elementary is and how much you're doing to promote that school, not the school, but the kids, every individual child. And I thank you and Ms. Appertons for your leadership there in this program. And I just think it's wonderful to see so many organizations, so many people just buying into what you do and what Worcester County Public Schools stands for. So thank you for that, Dr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for that compliment. But I also want to say this to you. We learn from the best. The people taught me to do this. I go out in the community at the Lions Club. When they ask me, I go, and I tell my story about my school. You know, I tell the story of my Buckingham kids. And I think what's often over time, Buckingham sometimes, because we're up north, you sometimes forget about the concentration of poverty in Berlin. And we've got to make sure our community knows what our kids need, and that I have never asked, this morning I put on Facebook at 4:13, I put, "I need five Easter baskets" for five little girls, and I was wrong, one was a boy, but for one family. And by 8:30, I had 15 people asking me to take care of Easter baskets. It's, if we ask, they want to help because it's just such an amazing community that we live in. So thank you all. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Buckingham. Great job. And I will be brief with my blueprint update. So just want to celebrate, we have been doing regional meetings to get our word out where we are with our blueprint. And I see some strong schools ladies in our audience, and we did have some strong school representation at some of our meetings. We met in the Pokemoke area on 3/11. We met in the North End on 3/12. And then we're meeting tomorrow night in Snow Hill, if anybody would like to come out and see our presentation. We're just talking about very high-level, how we're doing with the blueprint by pillar, what progress we're making, and what challenges we're still having with the blueprint. So please come out. It's at 5:30 at Snow Hill High. So if you'd like to join us tomorrow night at 5:30, please plan on doing that. Just an update, there is a technical assistant grant that we are going to apply for through the blueprint to receive some help around, it's called resource allocation. It's going to help this fellow next to me probably more than anyone on how the blueprint funds funnel down into the schools. And they've just put out a form around, it's like a brief application form. And so Brian Cook, I know I've mentioned him before, he helps out with the blueprint, and he and I are going to fill out that participation form. And I believe those grant funds will be available in July, so we'll keep you posted on how that goes. We've talked about the expert review teams that are coming to Worcester County. We've had two visits thus far. They've gone to Ocean City Elementary School, and they visited Snow Hill Elementary School in early March. They are visiting Pokemoke Elementary School tomorrow and Thursday. Visits have gone very well, and I believe, I know Ocean City's report is ready to be published, so that that will be released very soon. Very promising, very great reports from both schools so far around student engagement and student progress. So all the teams have been very, very promising and great reports. Last but not least, we did submit on Friday the 15th, our first chunk of the blueprint. That was our system-wide piece. As you know, each year, this is only our second year, but each year we write a plan around the blueprint on how we're going to manage all five pieces, all five pillars. And our first piece, our first 10 pages of 200 was due on Friday the 15th, and we turned that in. And so we're looking forward to getting some feedback on that, and we'll continue to write the other 190 pages, which will be due by May 1st, and we'll keep you posted on that. But I know that Dr. App, Dr. Wallace, Mr. Tolbert, and Mrs. Williams are working on that right now, and myself with Pillar One. So we'll have that into the team by, hopefully by April 5th, so that we can get our steering committee involved in looking over our responses and turned in by May 1st. So lots of blueprint updates, but unless the board has any questions at this time around the blueprint and where we were. And I just want to thank Dr. Andes and Ms. McComas for coming out to our North End meeting at Shaw. They visited us for our blueprint regional meetings, and we thank you very much for your support. And back to you, Mr. Frante.
Thank you, Ms. Shorts. Thank you for the update. Thanks for all the hard work you're doing, keeping us informed on the blueprint.
Yes, you're very welcome.
So now we're moving on to administrative operations. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. App.
Thank you, Mr. Frante. This month's personnel exhibit for your consideration, we have retirements Florence Donaway, Educational Assistant, Cedar Chapel Special School. Resignations Armani Wise, Custodian II, Snow Hill High School. Hannah Linton, Educational Assistant, Pokemoke Elementary School. Jenna Velibus Obalado, the Educational Assistant Home Educator, Buckingham Elementary School, and Caitlin Fallon, Teacher at Snow Hill Middle School. The superintendent recommends approval of the personnel exhibit.
Thank you, Dr. App. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the personnel exhibit as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Smack, and a second by Ms. McComas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And now I'll turn it over to Dr. Wallace for the safety update.
Good evening again. I'm going to combine our safety update also with our next item, 7.3. I just, I first wanted to, again, thank Mr. J.C. Barbling. I think he just left, but Ms. Pat, you can thank him for us for his emergency response earlier this evening. You saw safety firsthand this evening, and please keep your thoughts and prayers with Catalina as she recovers. But I did want to thank him for his response this evening. We appreciate our emergency responders and our sheriff's office, who is here, who is supporting us also. Before you this evening, you have a memorandum of understanding addendum to that. This is to, and I'll just share a little bit of history, I think it's important. I met with the chief deputy in the beginning of October, late September, before any of the safety task force met. And we discussed drug dogs in our schools. It was my priority and also the chief deputy and the sheriff to have our drug dogs in our schools as much as we possibly can, just as a reminder to our students that our schools are drug-free zones, and to make sure that we are prioritizing safety. We were in agreement with that. The agreement that we came to was that he would have the drug dogs doing visits in our schools once a month. What we wanted to do this evening, though, is memorialize that conversation again that happened before the safety committees met. I do know, I have verified that the chief deputy did share with the safety committee that we had came to that agreement months ago. So we are, again, this is our document that we share the memorandum of understanding with the sheriff's office, but we certainly didn't mind drafting this up. And again, the superintendent would recommend your approval of this addendum to the sheriff's office regarding canine scans.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wallace. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the school's safety MOU as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. McComas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buchanan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moving forward, I'll go to, back to Dr. Wallace.
Can I say something about safety as well?
Sure.
Okay. With all the public presentations being done back and forth between the Board of Education, Sheriff's Office, and the State's Attorney's Office the last couple of weeks, I can't help but understand or help but wonder why the Board of Education would put a statement out to the public indicating there would be no more public comments made. I, from the very beginning, had indicated to our board president that I felt that it was needed to include the State's Attorney in on the letter that was sent to the sheriff in response to the presentations being made. From the very beginning, the State's Attorney accompanied the sheriff, as well as the chief deputy in all of our meetings. And I just felt that in order to mend the ties that are now seemingly broken, I felt that it was needed to include her as well in the further conversations ahead. I wanted to just make that known, that I, as a Katie Addis board member, did not agree with the letters that were being put out there, as well as the letter being put out to Sheriff Matt Cristofoli, as well as the public statement that was put out this past Friday. I would like to see us move forward to work with the sheriff's office, to work with the State's Attorney, and to move forward to get all these issues handled. And it was discussed in our task force meeting to have a member of the sheriff's office come and speak to the board members once a month to update us on issues that are taking place in our schools. And I would like to revisit that with the board. I believe it would help bridge communication gaps monthly between the entities, and we'll allow time for discussion if there are any discrepancies.
Okay, thank you. I do want to address one thing that you said there. First of all, we've met with the sheriff's office many times before without the State's Attorney. We've continued to do that throughout the history of the board. So it's not necessary that the State's Attorney be present when we meet with the sheriff. Our MOU is with the sheriff's department, and we have that MOU in place, and we've met with them frequently, and we continue, we sent an open letter to the sheriff, asking him if he would meet with us. So it's not always a requirement that we ask the State's Attorney to meet with us, too. Okay? Moving forward, I'd like to get back to Dr.
Before we move on, I would actually like to have a discussion about moving forward with potentially having a member of the sheriff's office come and join us once a month and give an update.
Well, we could have a discussion, but that's not on the agenda tonight, so we can't have any motion. I don't know if any other board members want to speak to it. That is not on the agenda tonight, so we need to move forward.
So we're not allowed to make motions organically?
No. Your motion is out of order when it's not on the agenda.
So we're allowed to add things to the agenda the day of or the day prior, but I'm not allowed to make a motion?
You had the opportunity, Ms. Addis, to add something to the agenda before you approved it today.
Sure. I understand, but things were added today to our agenda.
You cannot add it organically.
Okay. Okay. Just want to make the record known that we're not allowed to make motions organically anymore, and I guess we're going to have to wait till next month to make a decision about whether or not we can have the sheriff's office come and greet us once a month to get, move forward with this.
The motions are made under Robert's rules of order, and that is not allowed. So, okay?
I think it's up to the discretion of the president.
Okay. We're not making a motion today, but we will have a discussion. That's for sure. Now, moving forward, I lost my place in line. I guess we're going to turn it over to Mr. Tolbert.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Frante. As you, I'm sure you recall, last month, the board awarded the bid for the replacement of the roof at Snow Hill Middle and Cedar Chapel School. And that bid included not replacing the Snow Hill Middle School roof portion, but going over top with a new roof. We took that to the county commissioners this morning for their approval, and during those discussions, it was recommended that we do replace that whole entire roof at additional cost, and that we bring that back to the board for their consideration this evening. And Mr. Price is going to update you on that. Mr. Price?
Mr. Tolbert, I'm going to say it again. You did approve the Valley Engineering Board in the February board meeting, which included retro room, existed a new Snow Hill middle roof on top of the old Snow Hill middle, instead of demolition. That saved us $1.2 million. And Mr. Taylor appeared before the commissioners this morning. They had concerns about doing that, and they requested Mr. Taylor bring the base bid back to the Board of Education for approval, and then appear before the commissioners again on April 2nd for approval of the base bid. So including your exhibits, revised bid that forms from February, and the superintendent has recommended approval of the Garland-Apecs base bid of $4,915,067.
So I have a motion to approve the Garland Company and Apex Business Solutions base bid as presented. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Andes? Do I have a second by Donald Smack? Is there any other discussion?
I'm just curious. I know that Snow Hill and Cedar Chapel are on our projected school construction projects for the coming years. I know that it's far out, but just asking for numbers related to, would it be possible to do a patch instead of a brand-new roof to make it until the new school is built? And what would the cost be affected, or what would the cost be with something like that?
Those roofs are over 30 years old. Patching is important. We've been patching since the beginning at this point. And Snow Hill Middle renovation, addition of replacements, it's pretty far down the road.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Mr. Price.
Yes, Mr. Frante, the next item I have is revised proposed FY25 operating budget. Also at the county commissioners' meeting earlier today, the county commissioners voted to accept the recommendations of the Health Benefits Committee for FY25, and those changes resulted in an estimated increase in health insurance next year of 4.3%. If the board may recall, our proposed budget that you adopted on February 20th included an estimated increase of 12.65%. So it's good news, it's going to be less than what we anticipated, but it does require a budget change, and it's actually going to save about $1.24 million in our requested budget, bringing down requests to the county by 1.24. And also, as part of the process, we've looked at the estimated revenue projections for next year. As the board is aware, other revenues, tuition, interest, restricted programs, reimbursement account for a very small portion of our overall budget, about 0.6%, but we did look at these projections, and based on interest revenue being a little higher, and tuition revenue being a little higher, and other revenue, we increased other revenues by about $199,959 to reflect new projections. The proposed budget documents have been updated to reflect these changes, and the superintendent recommends approval of the revised revenue and expenditure by category pages. Once the board approves them, they will be submitted to the county commissioners based on those revisions. But any questions about those revisions?
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Tolbert regarding those revisions?
I have some questions in regards to other revisions that I have found between the budget that we voted on last month versus what was in our binders. Am I able to go through those right now?
Sure.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So the first one that I had was on page 11 in our proposed budget. Okay. So, the first one that I had was on page 11 in our proposed budget. The co-supervisors coordinators are now in our budget for restated fiscal year '24 and requested fiscal year '25 as 13.8. But in the budget that we had voted on in February, it was 16. Moving on, there's school secretaries in this budget, it's 44. In the school budget that we voted on in February, it's 44.03. School or software specialist is 1.6 in our binders. In February, it was .6, as well as there were two new positions added to our binders, a grant writer for two positions and a project director for .6. And that wasn't in our budget from February. Is there a reason for those changes?
Well, if you remember when I handed the documents to you on February 20th, those pages were all marked draft.
Right.
And we were still going through and looking at, finalizing all the FTEs positions. So, I don't have those comparisons right in front of me, but I can certainly explain those to you in comparison.
And there's a couple discrepancies, but that just makes me wonder, as far as if we are voting on a budget in February, should that not then be the same budget that we are receiving in our binders, and that is then going to be forwarded on to the County Commissioners for review?
Well, what you voted on on February 20th was a two-page summary, the revenue and expenditure by category pages.
Sure.
And as we're still going through and finalizing everything, right up until we submit to the County Commissioners on March 5th, is when we submit it to the County Commissioners. Those categorical sheets that included the FTE breakdown were marked draft because we're still going through, finalizing everything. This is the first year where we've given that breakout that you were presented with this year. So, it is a different format. We are breaking it out differently than we had before. And those numbers continue to be updated till when we submit it to the county on March 5th. So, it may have changed. Stuff may have moved from one column to another, or from one row to another. It may have.
But Vince, it won't change drastically.
No, there was no drastic changes.
No, and that's not my point. I mean, a lot of these aren't drastic changes. I guess my point is, if we are voting on a certain budget with certain position numbers, should that change, or should that be allowed to change in the budget that we are then receiving after that vote has been made?
Well, the information, it was marked draft.
I understand.
So, that the people didn't really change. It was just, maybe it was reported in one line and it moved to the other line. I don't know. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
But if we're talking about one or two positions on 1,280 employees that maybe shifted as we finalized the numbers.
Vince, it's the same amount of money, correct?
Yeah, it's the same amount of money. The money didn't change.
Well, and I have just some other questions. As far as substitutes on page 11, are we not budgeting for substitutes? Because fiscal year '21, it was an actual of $69,000. Fiscal year '23, it was an actual of $40,000, but we don't have any amount budgeted for that category?
We typically don't budget for substitutes and instructional support. Mostly substitutes are instructional salaries in special education. We may have had some expenses in certain years, but it's not something we typically have under instructional support.
Okay. As far as all of the approved fiscal year '24 for page 15 under instructional salaries and wages, I am going to assume that that is the same as the restated fiscal year '24, but there's large gaps of numbers missing. Is there a reason for that?
Yes, in FY24, the approved, we were still, we didn't submit in the same detail that we're trying to submit now in FY25. We continue to try to be more transparent, to give more detail. So, I tried to restate FY24 to be more in line with FY25, which has given the more detail that was requested.
Okay. I have just a lot of numbers that are discrepancies. And that's where you were stating that they are a draft budget versus this. So, I can forward those on to you at a later time. But another question that I had was under, on page 34, under Operation of Plant. Can you explain why there is Maintenance Manager and Crew, and then Maintenance Manager? Is that the same position, or is that a different position broken out? Because it looks like the Maintenance Manager started in fiscal year '24.
We have Maintenance Manager. We also have Crew Leaders under Operation of Plant. We have two different types of positions.
Okay. Another question that I also had was on Operation of Plant, page 37. Looking at the budget, the draft budget on page 29, the numbers are the same as far as the amount that we had voted on, which was total other charges, $3.9 million. And that is the same in our current budget in our binder. But the numbers in the draft budget don't add up to that $3.9 million. It's actually over. Is there a reason why those numbers didn't add up? Are you, is it accumulation of being done inside our finance software, or is it being manually inputted?
Are you talking about page 37?
On, yes, on page 37, but in our draft budget, it's page 29. It's the same page, just draft is page 29 versus page 37.
Well, I mean, on page 37, the 3.9 number should not have changed.
It didn't, but all the breakouts don't add up to 3.9 in our draft. It's actually $200,000 over.
I don't have the draft document in front of me to look at it. I'll look at it.
Okay. I can send you all my questions with that.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, if you send it to me. If I had it in front of me, but I don't have it in front of me.
And then, I had another question in regards to the administrative costs. I actually emailed you about the breakdown because with our administration costs, it's broken down between Superintendent, COO, CFO, CSO, and staff accountants. And I wanted a breakdown for that. And is there a reason why all these items aren't broken down in our budgets? Is there a reason why every position, every full-time position, or EA, or bus contractor, all those positions aren't in our line item budget?
We've never included individual line by line, every person in our budget. I don't think that would be appropriate for a budget document.
But why not?
I mean, that's certainly up for the Board's discussion, but I don't know why we list every single position in the budget book. I really don't.
I guess one of my main questions is, with our position of the Assistant Superintendent with the Chief Financial Officer role, as well as the Higher Academic Education, is that, are both roles under one salary? Or are there multiple breakouts for that?
Like, the Chief Academic Officer for pre-K through 8 is an under instructional support.
Right.
Category. The Chief Safety Officer and Chief Academic Officer for grade 9 through 12 is under the administrative category.
Right.
And she's also charged out partially to Operation of Plant because she receives school safety also.
Okay. So, she is being charged out by two different accountants?
Yes, she is.
Okay. As far as the, in the back of the budget here, as far as all of the federal and state restricted grants that you gave us an update with?
Yes.
Are we able to be updated at next month's meeting, the grant start and expiration dates? I know on some of them, they do give expiration dates, but I was wondering if we would be able to get expiration dates for all of them?
Sure. I'll work on getting that information to you before next Board meeting.
Okay, I appreciate that.
No problem.
And then, as far as the vehicles, is there a way that we could be updated at our next month's meeting on the costs associated with each vehicle, or the lease agreement amount for each vehicle that would be monthly?
You want the monthly lease amount?
Correct. Or the purchase price of the vehicle?
Sure, yeah.
And then, would you like me to email all these questions to you so that you have them?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
If I could remind the Board of one thing, we have a very minimal amount of people that work in our finance office. I've got one CPA and Mr. Tolbert. And Mr. Tolbert does his very best to provide this information. With everything else we've been dealing with over the last several months, my leadership team has done nothing to help our schools, for the most part. All we are doing is answering questions, and we will continue at the direction of this Board. But I will tell you, if there's safety issues, I can certainly understand because we're not in the schools to work with our leaders and to help our folks the way we should. So, I just, I want to say to this Board, I want a direction as Superintendent on how you want to go in regards to the plethora of questions and demands that is put on my team moving forward. And I will do my best to answer you, but I need a direction from the majority of the Board on how you want to do this. Vince Tolbert has been working on this budget day and night, seven days a week, because he calls me at home, to answer questions. And if you want us to list 1,200 employees' salaries, including every bus driver, and what they make, we'll be glad to do that. We are working on a new software program because of the demands that's been put on us. We're working on new ways of presenting this budget, which we have done a great job. Have we made some mistakes along the way? We absolutely have. But I need the Board to tell me as Superintendent, not the other four, they work for me. I am their boss. I work for you. Each of the Board members here, I work for you. I need a direction on how to continue this, because I am tired as Superintendent, coming in every single day and putting up with things that are taking us away from our schools. And I just, I'm frustrated tonight, but I want a direction because I do understand that I am paid and directed by seven members sitting up here, and then these other people answer to me. So, I need a direction. If you don't want to give it to me tonight, I understand, but something's got to change. Thank you.
Can I just say, I'm not trying to call you out on anything. I'm just trying to get some questions answered. That's purely what it comes down to.
And I respect that. But call Mr. Tolbert, and how many times you've been down to his office?
But do you understand that I have had so many people contact me saying, "Thank you," on both sides of the aisle, both conservatives and liberals, saying, "Thank you for asking all these questions in public. It really helped me understand the budget." I don't understand what the problem is with that. This is not a political issue. This is trying to understand the budget, which is our job to do.
Okay. Well, Mr. Tolbert is happy to get back to you with any of the questions that you have. And I think you stated that-
Truly, I am not trying to do anything. I'm just trying to get questions answered.
That's fine. I just think, Mr. Tolbert, you know, you need to prioritize your work, as you well do, and just try to get back to Ms. Addis when you can.
I certainly will. If you send me any questions, I'll get back to you. Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Frante, one other thing I wanted to update the Board on is that because of current interest rates right now, we are experiencing higher than anticipated interest earnings on our money that we have invested. Tuition revenue is also a little higher this year. And we believe that additional revenue will be, allow us to be able to restore the summer programs this year for about $200,000. We've got $150,000 in the Donnie Williams Grant. We shipped the $30,000 from another grant. That along with this $200,000, if we recognize additional revenue, we'll be able to restore the summer programs for this coming summer. We've had discussions with the County Administrator. He is for doing this, restoring those programs, that additional revenue. But I wanted the Board to make sure you guys are all on board with doing that, and using that revenue to restore those summer programs this coming year.
Any questions for Mr. Tolbert? I think we're all hopeful that Summer Academy will continue.
Sure.
It's a very important, very important program for our kids.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. The last item I have is just the monthly-
Do we need to vote on this? Yeah, you need a motion to approve-
Yes, I do, for the budget. I'm sorry, I lost track. Yes. The revised budget, yes, sir.
So, I need a motion to approve the revised budget for fiscal '20, '25 as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Smack?
Second.
A second by Mr. Gordy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Go ahead, Mr. Tolbert.
Yes, the last item is the monthly financial report for the month of February with nine salary expenditures totaling $4,555,918.1. The Superintendent recommends approval of the financial report as presented.
Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the February 29th, 2024 monthly financial report as presented?
So moved.
Okay, that was simultaneous. Okay, a motion by Mr. Gordy, a second by Ms. McComas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Now, moving forward, I'm here for Board of Education Reports. I'd like to open the floor to any of my Board members that would like to speak this evening.
Thank you.
Sure?
Just a couple of quick things. I had the great privilege of being at Salisbury University recently for the recognition of the Young Authors Program. And Worcester County Schools did exceedingly well. I just wanted to tell all of you that are producing all those wonderful young authors, thank you so very much. I was very proud to be there. And Worcester County Schools were well-represented, so thank you for that. There was a mention of a need for a safety expert. I can assure anybody that's listening, we have the safety experts in place. Dr. Net Wallace is a wonderful Chief Safety Officer. You will find it better. She has done a great job of putting an MOU in place, of making sure that our schools are moving forward in a safe manner. And we have Sean Goddard on staff. So, as far as our safety team, we have an excellent safety team. I see no need to search any further. I can assure you, we have a great safety team in place. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gordy. Mr. Gordy, you were a former state trooper, weren't you?
I was a D.C.
Awesome, and a detective.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? Ms. Addis?
I would like to amend the agenda for next Board meeting, to add, to make a motion for the Sheriff's Office joining us once a month to provide us information.
Would you like to amend the agenda for next month? It hasn't been prepared yet. You can't, we have to wait.
Maybe I can try to help. I think what Ms. Addis is asking is, and I agree, this is the more appropriate time to do it, but I think she's asking that the Board President consider placing on the agenda the topic for discussion.
I absolutely will.
You know, having the-
I will consider that when we prepare the agenda, to put that topic on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I say any other forward comments?
Sure.
Thank you. For anyone that had watched the Commissioners' meeting this morning, there was a detailed presentation given by Weston Young, the County Administrator, about some discussion about the OPEB discussion from our last meeting. And we were actually given an email, and I was given permission to read a part of it. And I just wanted to have that said to the public that doesn't watch Commissioner meetings, that you are able to understand the County Administrator's understanding of OPEB. And that is, the OPEB Trust is a financial investment account that, when fully funded, will pay for the costs of current retirees. At this moment, the County Employees' OPEB Trust, based on market and staffing conditions, is able to cover the costs associated with our retirees. The WCPS Trust is not fully funded, therefore it does not generate enough interest and dividends to cover the costs of your current retirees. It needs additional investment and time to grow. Current WCPS retirees are paid for by the roughly $2.8 million you all have in your budget, with the county paying the rest out of our general fund revenues. When the WCPS Trust is fully funded, you will not need the $2.8 million presently set aside, as the trust will pay for that expense. I should note that the most recent annual cost of WCPS OPEB was about $4.5 million to $6.5 million, so you all do not budget enough to cover the costs of your own people currently in retirement. As mentioned above, the WCPS OPEB Trust is not fully funded. As of June 30th, 2023, there is a $139,629,561 liability. This is considered a long-term liability. Dr. Andes is correct that there is no requirement to address this liability. Why do we care? Well, this long-term liability impacts our credit rating. The credit rating and the reports put out by the credit rating agencies is the number- is the number-one impact to our interest rate when borrowing money for projects. We typically borrow for school construction, so having a long-term liability, or having a large, long-term liability makes school construction and whatever else we are building cost more. Less money for school construction is a bad thing. And in the current interest rate environment, anything we can do to obtain a lower borrowing rate is critical. I hope the above points show that this isn't just a fund manager that benefits. The two main ways to address this liability are to, to either fund the trust or reduce WCPS health benefits in retirement. I am not advocating for a reduction of benefits, just stating the options. So I just wanted to make that aware to the public that that is what is being said by the county administrator, just so that you have an updated understanding on that as well. And moving forward, I've, I've gotten a lot of questions this past month as far as why I had voted against the budget last month. And many, and why, what is my reasoning for that? And I will always stand on, if we have a clear, detailed budget, many questions that I continue to have would probably be answered without having to seek that information out. Like I had brought up, every paid position and a salary should be in our budget. That's, that's a number within our budget that we should be able to see. Every leased vehicle or bought vehicle, how much we spend or leased amount, and the VIN numbers attached to those. All contracted services broken down and listed with dollar figures. Many budgets, which are in our binders, but we didn't see last month, for extra programs such as summer academy, after-school programs, commencement expenses, early childcare, early retirement programs, et cetera, all those types of programs should be included in our budget so that we are able to get a full understanding of what is included. All materials of instruction and costs associated. What, to me, I have a really big question about what goes into the other charges category. In, in a lot of our categories, there's others' charges that are hundreds of thousands of dollars. I'm not sure, you know, what the standard is of going into other charges, but really, other charges should just be for one-time expenses that don't really have a home within the budget. So that's something else I would like to see broken out. But these are just some examples of the things I feel like need to be in a detailed line item budget to be able to understand what truly goes in on our budget so that we are able to make a well-rounded decision. I can't vote in good conscience on a budget that is lacking those items. And I urge my fellow board members to do the same for our following budget next year. That is all. Thank you.
Dr. Andes?
Thank you, Mr. Franti. Just a couple of items. I know the hour is late. So I want to thank everyone for coming this evening. I want to thank those people who spoke. Thank you very much. We do listen. I do take copious notes on everything that everything is, everyone said. And when appropriate, I follow up with our superintendent of schools and ask him questions. In regards to OPEB, as I shared with you before, in 2005, OPEB was launched. Didn't make sense to me then, but I understand it today. But I think it's important for our community to understand, when OPEB was first funded, most of the money went into the county fund, not the school system fund. So the school system has been, in essence, in debt ever since the first funding of OPEB. Because most of the dollars, when it was first launched in 2005, were put into what I call the county retiree account, not the school system retiree account. So consequently, we, we're in a deficit. We will be in a deficit because the money was not up fronted. Now, I, I know that when the, in 2008, '09, '10, that time period, I know when the assessment dollars dropped, we all went through it. And that created some additional stress. But in terms of OPEB, I understand it. I deeply appreciate the county administrator for sharing that information, Mr. Young. He did an excellent job in sharing the information to today, and I, I, and I hope, hope our community understands that. But I just wanted to point out the history because I'm sold. I was here when it happened. The second thing is on capital projects. From time to time, county government will move capital projects over to the school system and pay cash for their capital projects. Let me give you a prime example. When we built Worcester Tech, at, at the same time, there was a jail expansion going on. I don't know if you remember it or not, but those of you who were around, during that capital project, the money that the county share of Worcester Tech was $22 million. The cost of building the extension to the jail was $22 million. And I asked the county government, "Why simply don't you take the $22 million and pay cash for the school, and you guys go bond the jail?" Well, the answer was, "No. We're going to pay cash for the jail expansion and put the capital bond on your budget." So as a result, we ended up with that and bonded indebtedness on our budget because the county chose at that time to pay cash for the jail expansion and bond Worcester Technical High School. That's their choice. That, that's entirely up to them. In terms of fund balance, I've heard an awful lot about fund balance over the last 12 months or so. And I want to clarify something. When I first became, in my prior life, superintendent of schools, we would have a fund balance of maybe $35,000 to $40,000 a year. Maybe $50,000. However, there was what I call an eastern shore rural agreement. I don't know how else to call it. And I'm a, I'm a come here, I'm not a from here, that said basically, "Look, if you have an issue, if you have an issue, we'll take care of it. County commissioners will take care of it, if there is an issue. Just tell us ahead of time if there is an issue." So I'll give you some fictitious examples because I can't remember them all. So as an example, if our enrollment went up and we had to hire some new elementary school teachers, that would take our budget and throw it off. But we had to, so that's what we would do. Sometime throughout the year, I would notify the county administrator, "Look, we're going to have issues, whether it's in special ed or transportation or energy, or we had to hire new folks, whatever happened to be, we're going to have some issues." And I would forewarn them and forewarn them and forewarn them. And, and sometime in April, May, we would send a letter to the county government and would say, "Look, we think we're going to have overages in these categories. Please help us." And we would send a letter over, and sometimes I would be called over to stand in front of the county government, and they'd ask me questions. And sure enough, at some point in time, fortunately, we would be given a budget transfer, and we would get the money that we needed to cover those costs. I can't remember what year it is, but Mr. Tolbert was the chief financial officer. Do you remember? 2008. Thank you. In, in 2008, we did the same thing. Same thing. I kept the county government, county administrator, everyone informed. We went over, we, we were invited to stand in front of them. I think it was May. And at that point in time, the county commissioner said the following things to us. After there was, after there was some intense conversation, one, never, ever, ever come back here and ask us for any more money. Never come back and ask us for any more money. And I did not want to go through that process again. So I said to Mr. Tolbert, "Mr. Tolbert, don't ever let me go through that process again. It wasn't fun." And I said, "Vince, you got to create a fund balance to cover whatever cost happens to be because the county commissioners say they won't cover any additional costs. And frankly, I'm not going back there again." It was not a fun experience for me that day. So at that point in time, Mr. Tolbert started to create a fund balance. And he came up with, I think, a 1% fund balance. And that's what we decided to do. So in case energy costs went up, in case we had to reimburse bus contractors, room keys, full costs, or we had, whatever would come up, we would cover it, and I would never have to go back to the county commissioners again. That's the reason we have the fund balance. Now, some school systems in Maryland never, never tell their county government they have a fund balance. And they just sock it away. Worcester County, we're transparent. When we have a fund balance, we send the superintendent, the chief, whoever, says to the county commissioners, "Look, we have a fund balance. This is what we'd like to spend it on, but it's your call." Other places don't do that. We do it because we want to be partners. And that's what we did this year. In August or whenever it happened, there was identification of a $1 million fund balance. Well, how do you get $1 million? Because Andes told him in 2008, "I don't want to go back there again. So have a fund balance." So we had a fund balance. They go over and say, "We have a fund balance of $1 million. You know, we'd like to spend it here, here, and here." County commissioner said, "No, you have to electronically transfer the money, and we're going to put it in OPEB." And that's what happened. But that's the reason we have a fund balance. I want to talk to administrative building because that's something that keeps coming up, the administrative building. Long time ago, county government, if we all remember, had the courthouse and nothing else. They only had the courthouse. At that time, the county government, I absolutely agreed with them, absolutely supported it, need to build a government center. Absolutely true. Absolutely needed. They're running out of space in the courthouse. It needed to happen. So consequently, they built the new government center. At the same time, there was conversation about, well, look, this building, I love it dearly, was Worcester High School and has a significant historic, significant historic heritage. And if you ever want to take a tour of Worcester High School, take my friend Donald Smack and go walking around the building because he spent some time here, once upon a time. So at that time, also at the same time, the tech school was here, remember? And they were in the back. And oh, by the way, we had raw sewage in the, in the building. So we have students in the building, we have raw sewage in the building. The building was built in 1954, '55, not of the best materials, not of the best materials. So at that point in time, the discussion, because the county built their new building, well, why don't we look at a new central office? That's the reason that, that, that line is there. It's a placeholder. We're never going to build a new central office. It's not going to happen in my lifetime because the schools are more important. Building Buckingham is more important than the central office. Building every single school and renovating those schools and providing what they need to have is better, it's more important than this central office. This central office, that is a placeholder. It is, it's a dream that will never happen in my lifetime, and I don't think many people's lifetime around here. So I wanted to clarify the fund balance. I wanted to talk about the administrative building, and I wanted to talk about OPEB, and I want to talk about capital projects and how sometimes those capital projects end up on the school's budget. And sometimes those capital budgets, capital projects are paid for in cash on the county. Now, at some point in time in the future, and it's needed, and it's needed, there will need to be a public safety building built. It's absolutely needed. The sheriff has to get out of the basement of the courthouse. Absolutely needed. It'll be interesting to see whether that building is bonded or whether that building's paid for in cash. And then what happens to Buckingham? Is Buckingham going to be paid for in cash? Or is Buckingham going to be bonded? It will be interesting to watch that process. I'm going to stop there because I need to get home because our dogs are out, and they need to get fed and so forth and so on. But next time we have a board meeting, I want to talk about AIB. I want to talk about the Accountability Implementation Board. And I want to talk about the blueprint and its negative impact on Worcester County public schools. So I'll save that for next time because we all need to get home. It's been a long day. I'm tired, and the dogs need to get fed. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Begin?
I feel bad taking up everyone's time at this late night. And, and, Dr. Andes, I know you have to get the dog out. Just bear with me.
Two dogs need to be fed.
They do. I like to discuss something about the budget, I guess, which is something that has been a major talking point for comments. And in regard to the February meeting where we okayed the budget, and I brought forth, I brought forth the term expertise at that. Now, expertise really is an expert skill or knowledge on a particular field, okay? And I'm going to bring another term into that. It's called capable. Now, some, some people took the term expertise out of context in my conversation in regard to the whole, the whole process of budget review. And if there needs to be reducing of monies for programs and departments and staff, do that. So I want to take just a couple of minutes just to, because some people out there are probably really, really curious on how do you review a budget, you know, of that magnitude? And so bear with me when I follow my capable system of school budget review. And it may not be just singular to me. It may be other people sitting around this table. When I started thinking about it, I thought, "Well, maybe I should write a pamphlet about it." And I was thinking about a catchy title, something that someone might find interest, interesting in regard to talking about a budget and monies. And I, I came up with a title, and it's like, "How a Budget Is Reviewed by Someone Who Is Not an Ultra-Crepedarian." Ah, new term. Ultra-Crepedarian presents themselves as an expert beside not having required credentials, okay? Just kind of remember that term. Now, I'm sorry if this sounds like teaching. It's hard for me not to get out of the teaching mode. I've been in it for so many years. But for me, first step in a budget is that I looked at the annual state-required audit in June when it comes to us. We spent $50,000 on this budget from the Board of Education, 78 pages long. I go through these 78 pages, and I look for any concerns and recommendations that the auditing may want to come up with or, or inform the Board of Education about. And what I really look for in the past five years of being on the board is the term "clean budget." And I, the first year that I heard this, after that audit, I was like, "Clean budget? What is that?" And then Mr. Tolbert explained to me that the term "clean budget" is a, a term that's used in, in financial audit circumstances where there, there are no discrepancies in the budget, in, in the audit at all. So that's the first thing I go through, is the federal audit. I mean, it's a state audit. Then in January, we're given a proposed budget, 15 categories, and a breakdown within the categories for amounts that are requested and amounts that are spent. 2021, '22, '23, '24, requested '25, five years. So I go through this. I go through this proposed budget to look for any significant changes or increases. And as Mrs. Addis said, if you have a question, you ask a question, okay? And so I would do that. I would, I would get up with Mr. Tolbert if, if it's a question in regard to monies, and I would ask him, "Well, what about this? What about that?" You know? And then he would tell me. And then I'd be satisfied with the clarifications. Now, if I'm not, then we can have further discussion about it. But at this point in my review, I'm not going to redline, I'm not going to take a red marker and reduce dollar amounts in categories or delete programs- and reduce dollar amounts in categories, or delete programs, or reduce positions. That may occur, that may occur, after we submit this budget to the county, and if monies are reduced, that's when that occurs. Now, this action, if that occurs, falls on the responsibility of the superintendent and his executive team to make those changes, and to make those recommendations. They bring it back to the board, they bring it back for us to have discussion and to look at, at that point. This is their expertise, and the day-to-day running of the system comes into play, because anything that you reduce in this budget is going to affect 7,800 students in this system. It's the kids. It affects the kids. So the practice of having to look at a budget reduction falls first in regard to superintendent and his staff, and then comes back to us with their decisions or recommendations that they need, that they feel is important to them. We're Board of Education, we are oversight of this. Now, if anybody wants to try this review process out, all you have to do, because we are transparent, is you go to the Worcester County Board of Education website, you go to the menu, little menu bar is at the top there, and you click on it, and you click on finance. And then you will see, under finance, you'll see the current state-required audit, all 78 pages of it. You'll see the 2024 school budget, all the pages of it, and you'll see the 2025 requested budget, 126 pages. Now, it's extensive. It's a five-year comparison. I'm going to give you an example. When I was going through it, I just opened it up. I went to category 11, maintenance. Under maintenance, supplies and materials. Under supplies and materials, under supplies, you have building repairs. Under building repairs, you had categories, painting, carpentry, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and you had dollar amounts on each of those categories for the past five years. Now, this is transparency. If this is not transparency, I don't know what is. I did find it interesting, and concerning somewhat, that when I went on the Worcester County Government website and looked at the adopted operating budget for '23, '24, it was only 11 pages long. I'm finished for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Smack, anything?
Well, I'm starting. First of all, Dr. Anies, thank you, you know? Because I have a pad here, just like you. For all their names, I think about 26 or 27, I heard every voice that has spoken here this evening. But I have a dog too, I got to feed. So I'm going to tell y'all, all of y'all that's listening, y'all have a bliss, a happy Easter. And I love you all.
Thank you. Okay. And last, first of all, I want to thank everybody who came out this evening to our board meeting, whether it was to share your thoughts during the public comment period, or simply to be here and listen to our presentations today. I know from my conversations throughout the county, that topics are truly weighing on the hearts and the minds of our community, and safety of our schools as well, and its uncertainty of our upcoming budget request. I thought I'd take a moment to share some of my thoughts on these topics, so the public knows where I stand. I believe our schools are safe, and I don't think this board, nor our school administration, would ever be complacent when it comes to the safety of our schools. Taking away the pandemic, where all school systems across the state saw an increase during that year out of the pandemic between '20 and '22. But I will let you know that the Maryland State Department of Education keeps a record of incidents, they show incident records of discipline. Wycom, first of all, the Worcester County had the second lowest rate of incidents of any school system in the entire state in '21 and '22. By contrast, Wycomico County, which is twice the size of our school system, had 10 and a half times as many incident rates. And Somerset County, which is half the size of our school system, had four and a half times as many rates. The Worcester County Public School System had the lowest rates of incidents in '21, '22 on the Eastern Shore. Only Garrett County, which is half the size of our school system, had lower rates than Worcester County Public Schools. Under the direction of Dr. Wallace and Mr. Goddard, leadership throughout the collective work of our, several of our professionals in the span, the need of mental and physical health, special education, and student discipline, the work of this team having direct impact on student referrals. Some will try to deny it all, but they'd like to, but the data doesn't lie, and the disciplinary referrals are trending down for this school year. This doesn't mean that we don't recognize that our students that might need additional support. In the years during the pandemic, the mental health challenges have been on the rise across the nation, and especially in our young people, and in Worcester County is no exception. This is why a robust collaborative approach to our school system is taking, to bring many resources as possible to our students and staff, and has been so necessary. And the continued support of these resources is critical, which brings me to our budget under Mr. Tolbert's leadership, and the finance office that has clearly articulated what our FY25 budget request is. And Mr. Tolbert, please correct me if I'm wrong, or if I misstate anything, but 92% of our budget is people. That's our teachers, support staff, bus contractors, counselors, and mental health workers, and of course, our school system and our school system leaders. Our budget is primarily made up of human resources, and Worcester County believes that in the positive impact of small in-class, small class sizes that wraparound services can have for our students, the formula that has made Worcester County Public Schools a leader in the state. So this makes me ask the question, why should we change our formula? I've heard time and time again, whether here or at board meetings, or out in the community, the priorities of keeping class sizes small, and being able to offer programs to all students, no matter where they live, and keeping those mental health supports in place where the community desires. It is the role of elected officials to be the voice for all constituents, not just those who voted for it, for us to fit their own agenda. For me, this has meant educating myself on the budget, and listening to our constituents, which, all of which led to me fully supporting the FY25 budget with my vote. And now I will advocate for that budget as is deliberated by the commissioners. I believe in this budget, because I believe for all, that all it does for all of our employees, and they deserve raises, and it was negotiated in good faith. I believe in this budget, because it maintains low class sizes, and it provides our students with personalized instruction that they deserve. Low class sizes also help our teachers with classroom management, and that also helps with school safety. And lastly, I believe in this budget, because there's no fluff. This budget, the evidence is the fact that in year-end FY23, the school system maintained only a modest 1.2% fund balance. And we return that fund balance to the county commissioners. It goes to show that our physical management team are capable of thoughtward stewards of our tax dollars. As elected officials, commissioners should be voting on your behalf, so please make sure you let them know how you feel about the budget request. And don't leave your voice out of this important matter, because the consequences of our school system, as Mr. Taylor shared, could be devastating to Worcester County Public Schools. Thank you. And now, moving forward, I'll turn it over to Mr. Taylor for informational announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Ferante. Before I give three or four dates, trust and I understand you have an update on Catalina?
Yes. I've been in recent contact with Snow Hill High School student representative, Catalina's a Bluesator, while at the meeting, and I would like to share with the board, and viewers, and the audience, and at home, that she is doing well, and she is still in the hospital awaiting results. So just letting you know that she is okay, and she's going to be sending me updates as she gets them. So just wanted to make sure that we were aware that she's all right.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Just a few quick updates to share with you. On March the 27th, will be an early dismissal for students that day. Then March 28th through April the 1st, schools are closed for spring break, and for those of us who celebrate Easter, Easter break. On April the 4th, will be our annual Teacher of the Year banquet. Thank you, Ms. Steers, and she's been working hard at that, I know she has. And then on April the 9th, the FY25 budget presentation will take place, we don't know a time yet, probably in the morning, with our commissioners over at the county office building. And with that, I'll go over to you, Ms. Ferante.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. The Worcester County Board of Education meeting will hold a special meeting on Thursday, April 4th, in Sarah D. Thompson Board Meeting Room at Worcester County Board of Education Office. The board will convene at 12:30 in a board meeting, and we will immediately recess to travel across to the commissioners' meeting, room located at Worcester County Government Center, room 1101 at West Market Street, Snow Hill, Maryland, where we'll reconvene back here at 1 o'clock. Following the simultaneous meeting with the IAC and the commissioners, the board will reconvene in open session back at the Board of Education Central Office. No action is anticipated in this meeting. And now I'll ask from our board members, if you so desire to adjourn this meeting...
Move to adjourn.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.